John?
Yeah.
Just a heads up, we've got a public comment on.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, welcome. I'd like to call to order the March 25th, 2024 City of San Carlos City Council Meeting, and you're welcome to join us and take a seat if you're standing in the back. And we are all present this evening, so there'll be no Bill 2449 requests. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda from staff this evening?
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any proposed changes from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Presentations. And first up, we're going to present a proclamation to the San Carlos Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team upon winning the President's Cup Soccer Tournament. So I like this one. I believe they won a tournament with 20 teams in it, went undefeated through five teams, and I really appreciate that. So if you guys all want to come up here with your trophy and your coach, I'll meet you down there. Terrific, appreciate you guys doing San Carlos proud, and I can relate to what everyone puts into this, from the parents doing all that driving, to the coach and all those late nights, and of course, the boys and what they did. I did some youth coaching a few years ago, and it's a lot of work all the way around. So thank you, everyone. And these proclamations, I like to read the whole thing because this is important. "Congratulating the San Carlos Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team. Whereas the City of San Carlos Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team is sponsored by the American Youth Soccer Organization, whose mission is to develop and deliver quality youth soccer programs throughout the country, which promote a fun, family environment. And whereas the Fall 2023 Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team is comprised of eight players ranging in age from seven to nine who reside in San Carlos. Whereas the Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team overcame many hurdles this season, including beating out 20 other teams from all over Northern California, which led them to the President's Cup. Whereas on February 24 and 25, the Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team traveled to the Morgan Hill Outdoor Sports Center for five matches and went undefeated at 5-0-0, beating out formidable teams such as Mountain View Los Altos, Antelope Valley, Davis, Redwood City, and Millbrae, and winning the President's Cup Soccer Tournament. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, John Dugan, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council and community, do hereby congratulate the San Carlos Ten and Under Boys Soccer Team upon winning the President's Cup Championship and commend them for the honor they bring to our beloved city." Thank you. Great, would the coach like to say any words? Or, all right, you can step up right here. Thank you.
I just wanted to recognize this fine-looking group of young men for all the effort that they put in. This tournament was the culmination of a season-long plus, so they played not only fall soccer, but then winter soccer, and they came to this tournament not having played the entire time together, but they really gelled as a team. And to watch these boys out there on the field, really giving their best and giving their all, I took a lot of personal pride in that. I didn't coach every single one of these boys the entire season, but when I did coach them, they were a joy, an absolute pleasure to have on the team. Yes, Coach, anything you need, Coach, that kind of attitude, I would coach any one of these boys again, and they really play well as a team. I'm super proud to have them up here. I'd like to recognize each of them individually. This is Yvonne, number 10. This is Cyrus, number 7. And Henry is my son, number 18. Joe, number 9. Sean, who is so dedicated to sports, he came directly from baseball to be here with us. Sean is number 2 usually. We've got Stanley, number 10, who is so proud of his number. Turn to the side, Stanley, look that way. He's got the 10 on the side right there for everyone. Oliver, number 30. And Callan, what number are you? Callan's number 6. And my co-coach, I couldn't have done it without him, Mike Keller, who is a staple of the soccer community here in San Carlos and beyond. It was really great to have all these boys out there. I had so much fun with you, thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor Dugan, for having us here and recognizing this group of young men. Thank you very much.
Good job, guys. Nice work, thanks for coming out, guys, and you're more than welcome to stay for any and all of our meeting this evening, as you see the business of San Carlos take place. Good idea. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is presenting city coins to some of our retiring members of our Residential Design Review Committee. If you could step forward, Ellen Garvey, David Roof, and Haye Young Datwani. Terrific, so our RDRC Residential Design and Review Committee is a committee that we've had for a number of years, that reviewed the design for residential developments here in town, and we're out of that business now. So last fall, under state mandate, we passed a objective design review code, and we now have very specific objective standards, and so we thank the three of you to your faithful duty on our RDRC. Ellen, wonderful, Ellen and David, long-serving members of our Planning Commission, Planning and Transportation Commission, so we thank you for that, and they were also moonlighting here on our RDRC, and we just appreciate the service. I served on the RDRC for a couple of years, and you know, it's kind of like after the other late nights you've given, you show up and do even more late nights, so appreciate that. And our city coin is what we give to citizens who go above and beyond in service to San Carlos. So I will hand these to each of you, and if any of you would like to say a few words, feel free, that's up to you, but thank you for your service. All right, thank you again, and feel free to approach the podium if you have anything you'd like to say.
I'll start, and David and Haye Young. Thank you very much for recognizing the work of the Residential Design Review Committee. I really appreciate the recognition. I'd like to start by thanking fellow Planning Commissioner David Roof for stepping in and filling in for me whenever he was needed. I'd like to also thank Haye Young Datwani for all of her design feedback and expertise. She served on the committee for a very long time. I'd also like to thank staff for all the work they did preparing the packets. I'd like to give a shout-out to the two architects, practicing architects, who served on the committee. For the first two years, it was Eugene Sakai, and for the final year, it was Jon Stewart. These guys both stepped up and gave a lot of advice to the committee. I'd also like to thank the neighbors. Many neighbors commented on these projects. Some of them liked the projects, and many of them did not like the projects. And the projects ended up being a lot better because of these neighbor comments. So if you're a neighbor out there and you've commented on the project and you're listening, thank you very much. And their comments, along with staff's comments and the committee's comments, helped inform the objective design standards that now guide this process going forward. So before I turn it over to Commissioner Roof and Haye Young Datwani to see if they want to say a few words, I just want to say thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ellen.
Well, Ellen expressed the sentiments very nicely. The great thing about this community is that there's opportunities for the citizens to participate in various ways, serving on committees and commissions, highly encourage it, and it's very rewarding to give back to our community, and so I was very pleased to be part of a well-oiled machine that did that role while it was needed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David.
I would also like to thank Ellen and David for serving on the committee with me. It was such a huge learning experience for me. I don't think, since going to Catholic school and high school, that I've done this type of community service, and it really has taught me so much about what goes into it, and all of the work that goes into it, even behind the scenes, before we even show up, all the planning and all the staff and everyone who is so dedicated to making the community better, and I just feel so fortunate that I was able to experience this, and thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Haye Young. And I'll just add that all three of them, we do appreciate their service, and their mention this evening of how rewarding such service is. We do happen to have several openings on our important commissions, they're all posted on our website, I encourage people to check it out and apply if you're interested. And what I tell everyone is, there's a lot going on in San Carlos, it is very rewarding to be involved, and it's a great antidote against the national news cycle, so. And Councilmember Collins, did you have a comment?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that I was part of both of the councils that chose David and Ellen, and it's not an easy job. I was on the Planning Commission when it was called the Planning Commission. John was on the Planning Commission, I don't remember if, I think it was after he left that they changed it and included the transportation element, but I'm very proud of the work they did. We interview a lot of applicants, and some of them are, you know, rise above the others, and Ellen and David absolutely did. I was never ashamed of the work they did, very proud of it, and I just want to say thank you again, I wish we were both still staying on, but you know, there are limits, there are term limits, so. But anyway, thank you again, we really do appreciate your service.
Great, thank you, Ron. All right, we'll move on to Item 5C, which is receiving a presentation from the Sequoia Healthcare District on the services they provide to our community. Well, thank you, appreciate your coming.
Hey, great to be here. So, Mayor Dugan, nice to meet you, I don't think we've ever met in person. Chance to know for a long time, number of years, some of you were my daughter's preschool teachers, many, many years ago. Her team also won State Cup, she was a goalie. She's now 12, so that's how, that's how long I've known her, for need of four, so. Anyway, it's a pleasure to come to spend a few minutes with you this evening. As most of you know, I'm on the Sequoia Healthcare District Board of Directors, I'm currently the president of the board. I represent half of San Carlos, basically the flats, kind of the hills are Dr. Jerry Scheffrin, but we sometimes kind of toil away in obscurity over there, so we wanted to have a chance to kind of let you all know what we're up to and see if there's opportunities for partnership. So let's see if this works. Oh, okay, did I do that or did you do that? You'll do it? That's cool, okay. So a little bit of who we are, just the background, we serve the southern part of San Mateo County, there's a Peninsula Healthcare District that serves northern part of the county. We are funded by a small amount of property tax money that we get every year, and our mission is to better the health of our community, using that, those funds as wisely as possible and trying to put as much, hopefully every cent, back into the community to improve the health and well-being of all of our residents. You can move it on. So as I mentioned, we're the southern half of the county, so that's about 250,000 total residents. In addition to San Carlos, you can see some of the other cities we serve here, Redwood City is a big one for us, Menlo, Woodside, Foster City, Beaumont, and Atherton. As I mentioned, I represent half of San Carlos, so I'm District C, the big District E, the big blue blob there that covers the other half of San Carlos and a lot of the unincorporated area of the county, is represented by Dr. Jerry Scheffrin. So last year, we served about 2,700 residents of San Carlos, mostly through the long list of our community partners that you see here. Obviously, they're not all located in San Carlos, but our San Carlos residents have traveled and outside of the city to take advantage of a lot of the resources you see up here, and I would just kind of highlight that we do have some, like One Life, who are very, very active in town, and I'm sure you all know them, but you can see the long list there, I don't need to read through it. But we have a lot of community partners, and we're always looking to expand. Very brief history of us, we started with the construction of the hospital back in the middle of the last century, and then in 96, the hospital was sold, and the board stayed as an entity that, instead of governing the hospital, we now work on health and wellness for the community itself, but we don't actually have relationships with the hospital, and we work in partnership with the hospital, but we are independent of them at this point. That's us, that's me, and I mentioned Dr. Scheffrin below, on the bottom left, represents the other part of San Carlos, and you can see the other members of our board. And actually, I should mention that we have, I suppose negligent here, but our CEO is behind me today, too, and Lou, as I stated, is part of our staff, are here, too, so. Don, sorry, I shouldn't have introduced them at the very beginning, okay. So over the last five years, we've spent, this is a bit about what we've been doing, so the HSI is the Healthy Schools Initiative. The last five years, we've put about $20 million into the local school districts, so the San Carlos School District and Sequoia High School would be the two that most of your, most of the folks here would have received benefit from. We also have something called the Carrying Community Grants Program, where a lot of our partner agencies come to us, and we have a program set in place where we set aside money each year with our priorities that we set, and help fund different nonprofits in the community, and that's where that really long list of where all of the residents were served came from. So this is where our last 2022-2023 fiscal year, so I mentioned the Carrying Community Grants, so that was about $4 million total. The Healthy Schools Initiative was a little over that, 4.2 to the local school districts, and we already have about $3.8 million earmarked for future programs that we're working on. The Healthy Schools Initiative, I think, is kind of the crown jewel of the healthcare district, and it's probably how a lot of you, if you've heard of the healthcare district, if residents here have heard of the healthcare district, it's often through the Healthy Schools Initiative. We fund the wellness coordinators here in San Carlos School District and other districts you see listed. It's how I originally came to find out about the healthcare district, asked me to speak at some of the school district events, and I was like, oh, what is this? Oh, this is fun, hey, maybe I should be a part of this. So that's, I think, where a lot of people have heard of us from. We have a few other programs that we're super proud of, we have some longstanding partnerships with some of our safety net healthcare clinics in the county, so Ravenswood you see up there, about $1 million annually, and Samaritan House, $2 million and a half. We work really closely with our county health partners, and I mentioned the school districts. I was also really proud, I would say, of the time that I've served on the board, I've been on six years now, which meant through the pandemic, so those count like dog years, I think, so I feel like, you know, a few more than that, but we had a, I was really proud of our response during that time. We were able to be very flexible with our funding, help our nonprofit partners stay open, and shift their focuses as well, and we shifted our own focus and got a lot of emergency funding into the community, so that's something that I was really proud of our response at that time. We also focus a lot on dental, and we've been funding Sunrisus Dental Health, over $1 million, and we've been doing a lot of school screenings with them. We've mentioned Samaritan House and Ravenswood and the county dental clinic, we've been putting a lot of our efforts in the last year or two into some dental services. There's a huge need throughout the county, and we're actually in the process of converting our district headquarters, hopefully into another dental clinic, and then finding a new place for us to live. So there we are, that is the current Sequoia Healthcare District building, hidden behind what was the old crunch gym, and now, I don't know, they've just parked those cars there for the last few years, but behind it is where we hide. And as you can see, we're, that's the building as it currently stands, there's our current blueprint that we're working on, and our partners with Ravenswood, to hopefully create a new dental clinic for some of our most low-income citizens. And lastly, just a little bit about the strategic plan that we're working on, this we set up about two years ago now, and these are kind of the five pillars that we've been working on. Equity inclusion being one of our overarching themes that we try to think about in every funding decision we make and policy decision. Innovation, try to get some new programs, such as the dental clinic that we're turning our building into collaborations with either yourselves, the county communications, which is why I'm here, we said that we didn't do necessarily a great job, I think, in the past of at least having people know who we are and where we are. I mean, half of you know where I live, but in general, it's a problem for, I think, the district, and then advocacy as well. So that's all for me, thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time, just to let you know what we've been up to, and if you have any questions, I can field them, or they can answer them if I can't.
Terrific, thank you, Aaron, I appreciate that. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, well, thank you, I appreciate all you guys do in our community, and you know, our healthcare is not quite as universal as I think we would all like, so I really appreciate some of the gaps you guys try to step in and fill, thank you for that. Terrific, we will move on to Item 6, Council Communications and Announcements. Do any of my colleagues have anything they would like to announce? Councilmember Ek.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. I just had two quick announcements. One, yesterday, I was able to attend Eagle Scout Court of Honor for four scouts from Troop 321 in San Carlos, it was at the Adult Community Center, and I had an opportunity to speak as well as a fellow Eagle Scout, and to just represent the council and offer congratulations. I think we had done proclamations for all of them, I'd seen actually signatures, I think they had taken so long to do the ceremony, there, I think, three different mayors had signed proclamations for some of them at one point or another, so. But it was a very nice ceremony, a nice recognition of the scouts and their work in our community. And then, secondly, I just want to announce that I was elected to serve as Chair of the City and County Association of Governments, CCAG, so I take over on April 1st, and they are the congestion management agency for the county as well, so looking forward to working on that for the benefit of San Carlos and for the whole county.
Terrific, thank you, Adam, and now we know where to address all our congestion complaints, so thank you. Councilmember Ek? I'm sorry, Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really for the benefit of the rest of the council, because we all got an email today regarding poison rat traps, and as a member of the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board, I thought I would take that email and forward it to the district manager. I did not know before I joined the board that the word vector refers to rats and other rodents, so when I got the email, I did forward it, and they are looking into it, and they should be responding either, both to me and to the person that sent the email, so, there you go, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, I do appreciate that, that, you know, the concern raised is worth looking into, so I appreciate that. Seeing no other council member communications, we will move on to public comment. This is the section of the meeting where we will allow the public to address the council on matters not otherwise on tonight's agenda, and if you'd like to make a comment by Zoom, now's the time to raise your hand, once everyone's raised their hand, we will, that'll be the folks that we'll hear from through Zoom, but first, we will hear from any folks here in the room that would like to provide public comment. Crystal?
So in person, we have five speaker slips for items not on the agenda, six slips, actually. First up is Susan Rose, and you'll be followed by David Ron.
Hi, Susan Rose, 411 Hillcrest Road, San Carlos. I typically come to council meetings to thank you and the city staff for your help and your support. This evening, I am here to ask for your help. I emailed each of you regarding my concern for a billboard along Highway 101 in San Carlos that implies that suicide should be glorified. This messaging is is dangerous. It offers no resources for those with mental health issues. Support resources are available and need to be utilized and need to be publicized. I'm sorry. The Suicide Prevention Resource Center has developed safe messaging practices, and these should be utilized. I just retired from 44 years working in education and have seen firsthand the recent decline in the resilience among our youth. Due to the isolation of COVID and national and international issues, our kids are feeling increasingly hopeless. I participated in a day-long mental health first aid training with Vice Mayor McDowell, where messaging about suicide and prevention were discussed. Prevention education is available and needs to be offered to our youth and others. I understand from your email responses that the city does not have control over the content of the ad. If the billboard is to remain, I believe it is within our rights as a community to insist that the suicide hotline, 1-800-273-TALK, and the emergency mental health hotline, 988, be posted on the billboard. Star Vista maintains a local 24/7 crisis hotline at 650-579-0350 as well. In November 2023, the National Institute on Mental Health declared suicide prevention a top mental health priority due to the staggering statistics nationwide. And yes, it can and does happen in our small town. Prevention through education is key. I have frequently thanked each of you for your service, and I am truly grateful. City Council has got to be one of the toughest jobs out there. This public mental health safety issue in our community is an important issue, and it rests in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
David Ron, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Alan Fisher.
Hello, my name is David Ron, and I'm a longtime resident of San Carlos. To this council, as protectors of the image of San Carlos and how our city is perceived in the Bay Area, I ask that the billboard that glorifies suicide, self-immolation, and martyrdom be removed from 181 Industrial Road, San Carlos. Don't we all find it sad that visitors are greeted on their arrival to the city of good living with the romanticizing of suicide as a means to an end? This is not one of those there are good people on both sides arguments. I can set aside that the billboard pays homage to the suicide, pays homage to suicide for free Palestine. If it said we honor suicide to free pandas, we would feel equally outraged. I understand that this is a private billboard, not leased by the city. But this is not a First Amendment issue to protect advertisers. This is a public health issue. The city must exercise its authority in the interest of public safety. Adco advertising should not be exempt from public health protections, as most social media companies, including X and Instagram, prohibit the posting of content that promotes or glorifies suicide or self-harm. This billboard that welcomes people to San Carlos violates the same guidelines designed to protect our children. Why are we not protecting our teens from these same messages? I ask for the following actions: removal of the billboard under San Carlos Municipal Code Section 18.22.10 Subsection C that provides for the balance of public interests versus the protection of free speech. And a demand to Adco to replace the billboard with a public apology, including a phone number for a suicide prevention hotline approved by the city of San Carlos. Please use your authority as our elected officials to have this dangerous billboard removed. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Alan Fisher, you're up next, and you'll be followed by John Rose.
Mayor, Mayor Dugan and councilors, there are several billboards in our area about the war in Gaza that I find personally offensive and that tear the community apart. Of course, this council has no role in foreign policy. We also rightly value the fundamental American commitment to free speech, which certainly encompasses billboards, as offensive as some may be. However, this one billboard on 101 stands out as egregious for celebrating the suicide of a young man, Aaron Bushnell, who set himself on fire outside the Israeli Embassy in Washington earlier in the winter and shouted "Free Palestine" as he died. I'm not a mental health professional. Others here this evening are in the field and can properly reflect on this tragic death and its impact on others who see it glorified on the billboard. I can only point out that among those in the many cars driving by it on 101, there will surely be some who know about Bushnell's suicide and will be tempted by his prominent image on the billboard to emulate his action. I suggest that it's within the responsibility of this council, as a matter of public health, to recognize the danger in this message and to take action to remove it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Rose, and then you'll be followed by Barbara R. Summer.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm John Rose, also a longtime San Carlos resident. The billboard in question sends a subtle but unequivocal message that it's brave to kill yourself in order to influence public policy. The city has an obligation to halt this incitement to self-violence. There's been extensive research done on the, the effect of modeling on suicide, particularly by teens. And the, this effect is not insignificant. It really does influence teens to kill themselves. This is not a message that anyone in our city should be free to advertise in such a public way on the main gateway to our city. I do understand that this is a big issue, that taking this on will require a lot of city time. I'm sure that the advertiser who posted that billboard is not going to take it down quietly. But I believe the city does have means to intervene, either by compelling a safety message to be added to the billboard or compelling the billboard to be removed, even a very radical step of possibly seizing the billboard by public domain. But I believe the city must act. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Barbara, you're up next, and you'll be followed by Sarah Audit.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me. This is the first time I've been doing this. So I'm Barbara Summer. I'm a psychiatrist who's been on the faculty at Stanford since 1996, which dates me a little bit. When I saw this really appalling billboard, it made me go into literature and look it up a little bit. And there have been at least several cases that have found that when one person self-immolates, it can give rise to clusters of it. And I think that was alluded to before. It was also found that the vast majority of people who have done this act have a history of psychiatric disorder, up to 80% of them do. So rather than glorifying a cause, it almost seems like it's glorifying an act and it's taking advantage of somebody's mental illness, which I think is unfair to the patient, the family, and certainly reflects badly on San, on San Carlos. And I'm not sure it's going to be a very difficult slog to counter free speech. But is it really free speech when you're trying to invite younger people to immolate themselves? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Sarah Audit, you're up next. And that is the last speaker slip for in person.
Hi, I'm a lifelong San Carlos resident. I have a PhD in clinical psychology, although you certainly don't need one to understand how dangerous this can be. I was very disturbed to see the new billboard by the Holly Street exit on 101. The billboard showcases Aaron Bushnell, a man who recently very publicly and very violently died by suicide, and it paints him as a hero. I've worked in suicide prevention. I've treated patients who had suicidal thoughts and worked on coping plans to keep them safe. I've also worked on inpatient units to help people recover and rehabilitate after surviving suicide attempts. Anyone whose life has been affected by suicide knows that we can't afford to neglect suicide prevention. I'm extremely concerned about this billboard's potential to spark copycat suicides, which research shows often follow high-profile suicides, especially when mishandled by the media. For example, in the three months after Robin Williams died by suicide, there was a 16% increase in suicide deaths. The World Health Organization lists media guidelines to reduce the risk of suicide spreading, which includes recommendations not to normalize suicide, not to reduce the reason for suicide to a single factor, and not to place suicide-related stories in prominent places. This billboard is mishandling all of these. I know that San Carlos is committed to the safety and mental health of its citizens. I don't know whether the city has any control whatsoever over this billboard. But my hope is that at a minimum, the city council can issue a statement of its disagreement with the billboard's presence that acknowledges its potentially dangerous impact and lists available suicide crisis resources. It's our responsibility to support the members of our community who are vulnerable to suicide. We need to send them the clear message that suicide isn't heroic and that we can help them through their current crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Crystal, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, we do have two hands at the moment.
Okay, we will take those now.
Are we going to cap it at the two?
Yes, that's our policy.
Okay. So Josh Safran, Safran, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for everything you do for the city. We live on Western Carmelita Drive, and I'm reaching out to the city council to follow up on a few emails that we've sent back and forth requesting that we have a look at some additional traffic calming measures on this particular block of Carmelita. We've been working with the city for almost 20 years to find a way to put in some traffic calming devices and other measures. And we're continually met by rules and regulations, however well-intentioned, are preventing us from achieving results. So we on the block were hoping to request that the city pay special attention to this block based, again, on some unique circumstances around cut-throughs, some narrow parts of the street, and also a lot of traffic during school and commute hours. We've had several close calls lately, and we understand the procedures that the city needs to follow. And we're asking if we could get a special set of eyes on this, given the special situation and the unique situation of this block. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And I do believe the city has looked at Carmelita. Niall, could you please get back to this resident on that one?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Crystal, is there a second hand?
Yes. So the last hand up is Esther Audit. You should be able to unmute. Adu, Esther Adu, excuse me.
Yes. Good evening, council members. The San Carlos Municipal Code has Section 18.22.010C1. And it says that the purpose of regulating signs is that to advance various public interests, including the protection of free speech, while also balancing this right against public interests. San Carlos already takes some actions in the effort to prevent suicide, such as by compiling a mental health resource guide. San Mateo County has a suicide prevention committee, and the state and federal governments have departments on this issue. Ideally, San Carlos should find a way of avoiding future use of its airspace to celebrate suicide. And at the very least, the city should take a stance opposed to suicide or killing as a means of protest. San Carlos should take action to actually balance, as its own ordinance says, whatever right the billboard owner may have to air that harmful message with a very strong public interest against it. To protect its young, its residents, and all who drive by San Carlos, the city should issue a public statement that the celebration of suicide is not okay. The billboard tarnishes the city and hurts us all. I want the city to remember, the council members to remember that those who murdered nearly 3,000 Americans on September 11th were all doing so by suicide and as a political act. San Carlos can and should take balancing action in accordance with its municipal code. And in addition, I consider that this billboard is a nuisance and that it's using a structure contrary to the provisions of the municipal code. It disturbs the peace and it's a nuisance in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. And I believe that's all our public comments. So I appreciate everyone's passion and concern about the billboard. We are very limited as a council on the degree to which we can engage on a topic that's not on the agenda. You know, I do just want to clarify, this billboard is not in any way on public land or controlled by the city. And a government's degree of freedom with political speech is quite limited. I did, would like to hear briefly from our city council to lay a little bit more context on this issue, though.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, yeah, billboard, there's a great, vast body of law about billboards, and billboards are covered by the First Amendment and, and the free speech provisions of the US Constitution. Our code also has other provisions, I might add, that talk about content neutrality and the city not having the ability to regulate messages on billboards. You know, we do, we do have some ability to regulate consistent with the Constitution. The, the other issue I think that we need to consider is, you know, even if the city were to try to regulate billboards, the body of law talks about regulating content is subject to strict scrutiny. And that would mean that the courts would look at, is there any, is it the least restrictive, least restrictive method of restricting speech? And that's a really difficult test to pass, unfortunately. And I know the subject matter, it can be very emotional and, and difficult for a lot of people. You know, I would personally, I think I really appreciate the comments that the public made about the resources that are out there, because that's the message that really is the, the contrary speech to some, you know, people to, unfortunately, this gentleman who committed suicide in the way he did. While I was hearing this talk, and this is something we'll have to discuss, but, you know, the other billboards, some of the other billboards that the city has enable the city to put PSAs out. So some of the ideas that you've put in might be appropriate to put on some of the electronic billboards in town. And I intend to, to talk with our staff about that being an appropriate message to put out there to counter some of the, the concerns raised by this particular billboard.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. And yeah, it is a challenging issue. I appreciate everyone's concern on this. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, consent calendar. Would, would any of my colleagues like to pull anything off the consent calendar? I would like to pull eight J off. And I would entertain a motion to approve the other items besides J.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a city council consent calendar items A through, you said J is the one you want to approve?
Hi.
A through I and K, and item L, adopting ordinance number 1613, an ordinance of the city of San Carlos rezoning the 308 to 310 Phelps Road project site to RS6, single-family zone within a hillside overlay district for construction of nine single-family homes, APN 049-292-050, 049-292-040, and 049-292-060.
Second.
Trifig, we have a motion and a second, but I understand we have a public comment. Crystal, could you please clarify which item we have public comment on and then allow the speaker?
Item 8K. We have a public comment from Tom Morse.
In regards to the repairing of the hillside landslides, I have nothing against doing that. The problem I have is how they, how they were created in the first place. It's a cause and effect kind of thing. And what I have a complaint about is that the city in, well, it got grant money, which I call gift money, to have the sheep's, sheep and goat crews go out there for three summers in a row. And the first, three summers ago, they had 200 goats. Two summers ago, they had 400 goats and sheep. Last summer, they had 300 sheep, or goats, rather. And gee whiz, I've been hiking this park for 30 years now, and only after that have we've had all these landslides, not before. So the common sense there is remove the vegetation, which slows down the water flow, and therefore the slides happen. the slides happen. I can't remember any time before in the previous 30 years these landslides been there. I've been also constructing trailers throughout there, never had a problem with it, never seen it. So in a way, we are fixing what we created, or more so is that our own city staff do not direct these people to how to just eliminate all the vegetation. They should be sparsely, or in some cases with these, with the herding of the animals out there, skipping over places. Because I can definitely say, on the location, on the north side of Britton Avenue, that large landslide that between the trail and behind the homes there, that was, all three summers, they ran the goats and sheep through there, and they also had the chainsaw crews eliminate all the vegetation through there, all the brush. So that was what was holding the hillside. So I can only ask you now is to please skip over places, go someplace else if you do these vegetation remediation things, or just put this in annual budget to keep fixing slides. That's all I'm asking. Watch, you know, it's cause and effect. Like, I wrote a note, it's a two-way street.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. You know, we, and I definitely appreciate your perspective, given all the time and service you've added to our parks. I will say, we've had a number of landslides in areas that did not receive such treatment. I think we have about 15 landslides over the last two years. So not disagreeing, I think it's a decent question for our geotecs, but, you know, it has been unprecedented rain, and we've certainly had other landslides where they've not existed before, but appreciate that.
... unprecedented rain before, and you were all listening to him those years.
We'll, we'll take a look at that. Thank you, Tom. All right, terrific. We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar items excluding Item J. Can you give roll?
Okay. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. Those items are approved, and so consent, Item J involving our Cadence Adaptive Traffic Signal Project, terrific. Thank you, Stephen. I appreciate you providing us a bit more detail on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So this item before you is something that, you know, we, our staff wanted to kick around, and, you know, for some months, we were having internal discussions on, really, how can we actually improve some of the traffic, operation of the traffic signal? So we just actually had the opportunity, kind of taking this item, to the Infrastructure Innovation and Improvement Subcommittee, which is chaired, or which are two, which our mayor and vice mayor actually sit on. And after kind of presenting this item, we actually received kind of the impetus to really kind of move this project along, figuring that it is time to really look at a lot of our signals. And so this is really a high-level view, tonight's presentation, really high-level view of what this system is all about. So with this is, I also have Hanya Hushmandi, who's our senior traffic engineer, and we're both available to answer any questions, so let's get ready with the presentation. So the Adaptive Traffic Signal Control System, really, the intent here there is to really help provide a smoother in traffic flow and more equitable distribution of green, green time at each of the signals. The software, in this case, it's Cadence, so the software manages the change in traffic patterns at intersection and adjust the timing every about three to four cycles in real time. So what that means is, basically, it kind of senses how the intersections operate, and it makes certain adjustments, kind of on the fly, if you will. So it's not instantaneous, so it does take a certain amount of time, certain amount of cycles to really understand what's really going on, but it can make those changes within the intersections, you know, fairly rapidly. And so this could be done throughout the day. The traffic patterns are collected using kind of existing loops or traffic video detections at the signal. So really, you're not going to really see any additional things that are on the signal or in the boxes, or not see anything in the street. It's just basically software that we're actually going to be in the controller cabinets, and then they will be monitored by, in this case, Kim Lee Horn, who's actually going to do the contract for us, and it's a three-year contract. And then installations will be at 14 signals within San Carlos, eight of which are actually controlled by Caltrans, so this will be on El Camino, and then the other six are controlled by the city. So these are the kind of 14 signals, and I don't know if I can do this. Okay. So as you can see, this is 101, and down here is El Camino with, north is kind of going to your left, and then this, this street here is Holly, and then this street is Britton. So as you can see, we are, for the six signals in San Carlos, it'd be the two on Old County, one at Holly and the other at Britton, and then be one at Industrial in Britton, one at Industrial in Holly, and then at the interchanges of the ramp of 101. Basically, you know, we decided to kind of go with Kim Lee Horn, because they actually have a relationship with Caltrans, and Caltrans, actually, they are, they will have the six licenses for the ones on, in San, excuse me, on El Camino, and then we'll actually have the six licenses for our signals. But the reason why we went with Kim Lee Horn is because they actually had a lot of experience installing this cadence system, not only, well, actually for, with the city of Belmont, as well as cities of Menlo Park. And the results that they're seeing is, you know, look very positive, so we were very anxious to really kind of move this forward. So like I mentioned, we initially were looking only at probably about six or so, five or five to six, but I think with kind of the subcommittee's direction or input, we decided to really go for it, and let's go for all 14. So that really is kind of a nutshell. I think this is really interesting. It's a really good project, and we hope to actually, once, if, if this is approved tonight, we hope to actually have it all implemented and ready to go by the end of this year.
Terrific. Thank you, Stephen. I know traffic circulation's been a top goal of San Carlos since I've been involved, and I appreciate the support, given I've added some additional emphasis to this this year, and the fact you're accelerating this. I'm excited to see the results. Do any of my colleagues have any further questions on this one? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Stephen, for the presentation, and, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you pulling this. It is something that we frequently hear from the community. I know Councilmember Collins has talked about it, too, of the signals not talking to each other, and it's frustrating for the residents. Couple of questions. So you expect all 14 lights to be fixed up with this new software and actually talking to each other by the end of the year? Is that the timeline?
That is the intention. So it, they will actually look at individual intersections, and I'll ask Hanya to provide additional.
Yes, so the eight along El Camino Real already kind of talk to each other, they're interconnected. However, they don't have this robust signal timing plan that's offered through Cadence. Right now, everything's static. Certain hours of the day, you have certain timing plans, but with this new technology, the controller can adjust the cycle based on the demand that is out there, and it's most beneficial to all the side streets that come into El Camino. The majority of our trouble signals are those, because we don't get enough green, because El Camino Real demands so much. This will relieve a lot of pressure from the side streets during off-peak hours, so we're quite looking forward to that.
Great. Thanks for that answer. My next question is, we hear from our east-side neighbors about the right turn on red from El Camino going on to Holly, and if we have residents coming from the Tressle Apartments trying to cross, it can be difficult. Are we going to be looking at right turn on reds with this new software system?
We are looking at all of the movements and all of their timing. All of the signal timing plans for all of these signals will be adjusted, and then it will get further refined by the controller live. However, we will be looking at all of those movements. Anything on El Camino, Caltrans will have the final word on what timing plans can go in, in the signal, so they have the final word, if it's their signal that they're operating, but otherwise, everything will be looked at.
Okay. Yeah, because I think it's hard sometimes for, when there is a right turn on red, there's no brake for pedestrians to cross. And so if we can keep pedestrians in mind, as we're working on traffic flow, but keeping the pedestrians in mind, too, and giving them a chance to cross at some point.
Yeah, all of that will be considered.
Awesome. Thank you. And then my final question is, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on this, too, and you did a great job. And it was mentioned that some of the traffic signals along Industrial, the newer ones that were installed through development projects, were not hooked in to the existing system. Can you just explain that a little bit and kind of what our plan is to get them hooked in?
So that kind of touches on the traffic signal master plan, which we plan to bring to you in April, that we already took to Planning and Transportation Commission. The traffic signal master plan looks at all 24 of the signals in City of San Carlos, and those two that you're referring to on Industrial were putting by development. And since we didn't have a traffic signal master plan and standard requirements, they were not required to connect it to the smart corridor system, so they're just standalone, not connected to the technology that's available to us. But as part of the phasing of implementation of the master plan, those will be connected.
Great. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Terrific. Thank you, Sarah. And seeing other comments, thank you, Stephen and Hanya. Exciting project. We're all excited about this one. Thank you. Terrific. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item 8J.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Fund, Fund 25, unassigned fund balance in fiscal year 2023, '24, to create a new capital improvement project for the Cadence Adaptive Traffic Signal Project, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for a three-year contract in the amount of $164,000, and authorizing the expenditure of contingency up to the project budget.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. That item's approved. Thank you. Moving on to Item 9, Reports to Council. And I believe first, we're going to hear an update on our housing element progress. Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor. Nice to see you. Good evening, council members. Lisa Porres, Planning Manager. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and share a brief presentation on the annual Housing Element Progress Report for the 2023 calendar year. The State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, requires all cities and counties to submit a Housing Element Progress Report every year by April 1st. These progress reports reveal how much movement the city has made in meeting housing element goals and actions during each calendar year from January to December. The San Carlos Housing Element was adopted by council on January 23rd, 2023, and covers the years 2023 all the way to 2031. So this is our first year of reporting on the progress of our newly adopted housing element, and the progress of, is typically collected in three primary reporting criteria or themes or areas that this, that I think are most important for us to take a look at. So first of all, the state wants to know, how are we doing in terms of housing activity? How many applications are coming in? Coming in, how many are deemed complete? What's getting approved? What's getting issued a building permit? And what projects are getting their final inspections or certificates of occupancy? The second thing, and probably what is the most celebrated marker of progress, are how many units count towards our regional housing needs allocation. And then the third area has to do with the programs or action items that are contained in the housing element, and what is our progress being made towards that end. So the focus of my presentation will cover those three areas. So starting first with housing applications and building permit activity, I'm pleased to share that in the 2023 calendar year, the city issued building permits to construct 32 net new units, mostly ADUs with the exception of one, and added this many units to its housing supply. And one thing that I do want to share and restate, and I've mentioned this before in previous reports, but the units that count towards our RENA are based upon building permits issued. It's not planning approvals. Sometimes projects get approved, but they may take a little bit longer to get their building permit issuance. So HCD or the state really counts progress made based upon building permits issued. So although this is a modest start, the good news is that we are holding steady in our strong trend of continuing to permit anywhere between 20 to 30 new ADUs each calendar year. And so, again, although this number is small, the good news, even more good news, is that we approved 410 new units in the 2023 calendar year. And these units largely came from 11 El Camino Real, a 242 apartment project, 1232 Cherry, a 100% affordable housing project of 34 units, and then 808 Alameda de las Pulgas, which consists of 87 townhomes. So together, these projects, once their building permits are issued, we would get to count 47 very low-income units, 33 low-income units, one moderate, and then 328 above moderate or market rate income units. Also, in 2023, we issued certificates of occupancy for 27 units, again, mostly ADUs, ready for folks to move into. So looking at our regional housing needs allocation or RENA, our obligation once again is 2,735 net new units all the way to 2031. So this figure is broken down by income levels of 739 units affordable to those making very low incomes, 425 would be designated for those with low incomes, and then 438 for moderate, leaving the remaining 1,100, roughly 1,100, at the above moderate income levels. So one of the things that the council may recall is that to ensure that we meet, we met our RENA, we decided to plan for an additional 437 units in order to ensure that we meet our RENA progress. And although we're planning for over 3,000 units, the state is measuring our progress based upon our base 2,735-unit RENA figure. So in our first, in our first year of reporting for the housing element, we can count a total of 46 net new units that can be counted against our RENA progress, and all of these are in the above market rate or above moderate or market rate category. So just taking a pause to kind of, you know, just kind of bring it home and see what does this really mean in terms of the below median income levels. I need my glasses. My copy here is kind of small. Thank you. So in, in, so what are these below median income levels in San Mateo County? So in San Mateo County, in 2023, the median income level for a household size of four is 175,000. So just kind of using a couple other benchmarks along this table, if we look at a household size, say, of two people, a very low income would be somewhere between 45,000 and 74,600. Another example would be for a single person, looking at the low-income category, how much would that be? Would it be someone making just over 65,000 to 50, but no more than 104,400? And each year, the area median income is reset, so it's essentially kept current. So moving on to our programs, there are about 155 different action items that we, as a city, committed to when we adopted our housing element. So the state requires that every year that we report on these 155 actions or implementing programs to check our progress. So on the left-hand side of the screen, highlighted in blue, outlines the things that we accomplished already in our first calendar year. So one of the first things that we committed to doing was providing financial assistance to nonprofit agencies to support the rehabilitation of low and moderate income residences. And of this 88,300, I would like to share that 34,300 went to MidPenn, and this was to replace a fire alarm panel and water heater at the L'Oreola Oaks Affordable Housing Community. 34,000 went to Parca, which helped to remodel the bathroom at the Cedar Street House for adults with developmental disabilities, and 20,000 went to Rebuilding Together Peninsula, which consisted of a contribution to their work to offer free home repair. work to offer free home repairs, free home repairs to seniors with low income, of low income, I should say, that would allow them to remain in their homes. In addition to providing that financial assistance, of course, we approved the 100% affordable housing project at 1232 Cherry. We adopted amendments to support accessory dwelling units. That was done just right at the end of last year. And we established an ADU point person, so folks know who to come to, and that person can be very well-versed in assisting folks that want to develop an ADU on their property. We're actively maintaining our housing element sites inventory. We have a new GIS layer that's available to the public, and everyone can see how many units we contemplated on all of those individual housing sites. And then, of course, the biggest thing was amending our zoning ordinance right in parallel or in tandem when we adopted our housing element, which allows higher, more floors, higher stories, and, of course, more densities, up to the 100 and 120 dwelling units per acre standard. And then we adopted objective design standards for single-family units and, of course, accessory dwelling units. What's underway this year is that we're currently working on objective design standards for mixed use and multifamily. We're going to be making amendments to our zoning ordinance to allow housing, multifamily housing, in our public zoning district, which this housing could be in accessory use, allowed alongside religious facilities and schools. So we want to make that amendment in our zoning ordinance. We also want to develop, hand out some presures, highlighting all of the work that we've done so far to amend our zoning, to really make it easier to build the housing that we need. So that's a little public outreach PR work to get credit for the work that we've done. And then we're also going to be looking at making amendments to our zoning ordinance to kind of make it equitable. If one is building a group home or residential care facility, we want those types of developments to be on par with the standards that we require for residential uses in the same zone. So that's kind of an equity issue. So with that, this concludes my presentation, just highlighting a couple of exciting projects that were approved last year. 11 Camino Real at the top, the top image, and the bottom image, excuse me, is 1232 Cherry. And I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Trivik, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate the very thorough report, and housing is another of our highest goals in San Carlos. So thank you. Looks like Councilmember Collins has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, too, actually. Can you refresh my memory? What does GIS stand for?
Geographical Information System. So it is our online mapping tool. We have a public interface where folks can type in an address, look up the zoning of a parcel, check to see what type of building permits activity might be on a particular parcel. So altogether, it's geographical information that's provided in a map form.
Okay.
Interactive map.
Okay. Thank you. My other question is in regards to the 808 Alameda project, we all know as Black Mountain. I believe it was approved and entitled nearly a year ago, and then ViiV sold all of their properties, I believe, to Lennar, which includes, I think, the Walnut project as well, which was also approved a few years ago. Any update that you can provide us on what's happening with Lennar? Because these are a lot of units that we would love to come online, but, you know, change of ownership, I don't know what that does to the process.
Sure. And I'll go ahead and respond regarding 808 Alameda de las Pulgas, but maybe Adam can help me out on 626 Walnut. So for 808 Alameda de las Pulgas, correct, it was approved, I think, May 1st last year. And when it was approved, it received a two-year approval process. So it has, they have until May 1st, 2025, to exercise their planning approval. As far as we know, I mean, not as far as we know, we know that they have not reached out to us, so we have not heard directly from Lennar, but that is who we understand the new owner to be. So no word from them yet, but the project was entitled on May 1st, 2023, and they have two years to exercise that planning approval. And then, Adam, can you help me with 626 Walnut? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Adam Marinson, Economic Development Housing Manager. So my understanding is that the county is actually in the process of acquiring the 626 Walnut property, and that would be for a potential workforce housing development. We'll see where that goes, but something we're very interested in following.
I did not know that. Thank you. That's actually encouraging to hear. Thank you.
And I think the county had a meeting already, where the county supervisors already approved the purchase, so it's moving forward from that end. It went on consent, so I think it was a pretty unanimous effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Oh, thank you, Lisa, for your. Thank you, Lisa, for your report. I just wanted to clarify, on the zoning amendments to allow multifamily in public zoning district, in regards to schools and religious facilities, can you just explain that a little bit?
Sure. This is a somewhat of a new kind of approach to getting more housing built. So the idea is that where there's, you know, a religious facility, these usually occur in our public, I think it's called Public Institutional Zoning District. We have a zoning district identified as public. And so these are areas where schools and religious facilities are located. And so I think it was, there was a provision, I think it maybe was a new state law, I can't remember how old it is, but, you know, kind of opened the door to allow this particular type of strategy to be, you know, to have a provision for it. So San Carlos, as part of our strategy, is looking into that, to really kind of open that option up for any type of, for a religious facility, if they have extra land and they want to build some housing, whether that's for schoolteachers or for folks that are, you know, maybe the clergy and whatnot, low-income housing, that they would be able to do it. So part of our implementing action item is to amend the zoning ordinance, so specifically we can state that this is a new use that would be allowed in conjunction or as a secondary use in conjunction with a religious facility or a school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pranita. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mayor Dugan, and thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. I just want to get kind of a sense on a couple of things. So, you know, Councilmember Collins mentioned sort of the ViiV project that we, at the time, that we approved, so that sort of was an application that was approved. It's sort of in between sort of your building permits and housing applications, sort of it's, but, and that was sort of was received prior to 2023, because it's sort of been in process. Do you have a sense for, obviously, 32 net units isn't a big number for 2023, but we have a lot on the horizon, right? We have a lot coming with sort of the, you know, potentially the ViiV project, the county project, we have the El Camino project that you highlight, and others. Do you have a sense for sort of what the runway looks like for the next couple of years for us? I mean, do we sense that, you know, next year, we might say there are 200 units approved for building permits pulled or other things? Do you have a sense of how we're doing down the road? And maybe you can't, maybe we don't know yet, but...
Actually, thank you, Councilmember Rack, for the question. I kind of thought the councilmate, one of you might ask this, so what's coming? So right now, we have received inquiries from developers looking at, you know, a number of different sites, I think seven different sites right now. So kind of reaching out to the planners over in current planning, who are getting all their requests and the activity on a day-to-day basis. We could see applications for, of about 100, just over 130 additional units coming online, and this is what we've heard so far. We still have the remainder of this year to go, but somewhere upwards to 132. And I can't remember how many are part of the Vista del Grande, but I know they're working on it. Does anybody have that number? No? I think it's somewhere similar to what was approved on Alameda de las Pulgas site. So there could be anywhere, maybe 60 to 80 additional. So that would bring that number maybe to 190, maybe almost 200 units that are kind of in various phases, you know, maybe discussion, someone may want to apply, people are coming and talking to us. So that is really encouraging. Yeah, we're happy to see that. And I think some of them are large enough to really trigger the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Yeah.
Great. That's helpful. It's good to know that we've got sort of 2023 and sort of moving forward, we have a good sort of pipeline being built, so that's encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation. Do you have a, have you heard anything from HCD about getting our housing element finally approved and where that stands?
So right now, we're waiting for HCD to respond. And the last time that I checked with them, they had promised me a response by this Thursday, March 28th. I feel that we are very, very close. The HCD has really, really been interested in making sure that our zoning standards work, and we know they work. We provided them with four really good examples. One of the first ones that got approved under our new regulations is 11 El Camino Real. We got 242 units there. We know that it's working, but one of the requests from HCD was for us to provide a deep dive into all of the standards, provide a lot of detail about these projects. So we're waiting for them to respond to us on that submittal, and it would be an appendancy to the housing element, and that's the last thing. So I am, you know, I'm crossing my fingers and trying not to hold my breath, but we're supposed to hear this Thursday.
Thank you. Cautiously optimistic. Just for the benefit of the public, we submitted a long time ago, and it's not that we've been dragging our feet in submitting that we're not approved yet, it's that the state has continually come back with more and more questions, and we've continually gone back with answers. Is that correct? I just, I want to clarify it for the public because we've had some questions about that.
We have had four different reviewers, which, of course, makes the process, you know, I think it could have been a lot quicker if we had one reviewer. So there's been some change in the staff over at HCD. And yes, they have asked for more and more information, and we're doing our best to respond. But where we have landed at at this point is this is the last piece. So we actually had a really good phone call face-to-face on Zoom with the prime supervisor, Paul McDougall over at HCD, and so we're pretty hopeful that this is the last bit. We're not expecting anything else, any further request. So I hope I have good news by the end of the week.
We can't wait. And I just want to send a comment that, you know, you had mentioned that the state is asking for proof that it works, and I think I'm really glad that we've already been able to prove that our new zoning is bringing in more development. I was really happy to hear your answers to Adam's questions, that we're getting lots of inquiries. I feel like, I don't know, it seems like that's because of our new zoning, that it's, you know, creating more interest. I feel encouraged that we've already approved 410 units, and I think it's important to, you know, make sure that the public knows that our staff is working so hard in doing all the approvals and getting these projects approved. And then that's kind of where our role as a city stops and the role of the private market begins, because then it's up to the developers to actually pull those building permits, and we don't, we don't control, you know, the construction costs or the loan rates. There's lots of market forces at work, too, that make these housing projects that have been approved with all of your hard work actually get constructed and come to life. And so I, you know, I think that San Carlos is working hard. We have this beautiful project at 1232 Cherry that we've, you know, all been very supportive of, that's, you know, being done by the city in partnership with a nonprofit. So I just want to commend you. I, too, am feeling hopeful and hope that we see much more housing coming down the pike soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Councilmember Venkatesh, follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to also commend the city staff and all of us that worked so hard to get all the affordable housing in. And it's a little disappointing to see these numbers, but I know we can get there, and I know we did a lot of work to try to get there. And there's just some roadblocks along the way, but we're going to power through.
Thank you, Pranita. And yeah, Sarah asked my question about the housing element update, but I just, also for the benefit of the public, I believe we kind of went a little above and beyond because we also submitted our zoning at the same time with our element, and that's different than what most of the cities in our county did. Is that right? Am I understanding that?
That's right. Not every city adopted their housing element with the implementing zoning at the same time. And some cities that have already received their certification, they have to go back to HCD and show, because one of the primary implementing actions or programs is for them to update their zoning. So we're curious to see how that process is for the cities, you know, that have not adopted zoning and how that's going to play out. So I believe, I personally believe, San Carlos was very proactive. You know, we kind of put our cards right on the table and said, we're committed to our housing element, we're adopting it, and we are adopting our zoning at the same time. So right away, that new zoning went into place. 11 El Camino Real could continue and get approved right in the same year. So, yeah, that's, I mean, sometimes, no good deed goes unpunished sometimes, but we have our zoning in place, so, yeah.
No, you know, I actually think it's great because, you know, like a lot of things, we're out in front, and actually, I believe we're well ahead of our peers that have not yet grappled with the zoning implementation of their housing elements. So I think that puts us in good stead, and that was clearly one of the components that has slowed us down in our review process, because that got them already churning and commenting on all of our extensive zoning changes. So if we do get that approval on Thursday, I mean, we might be the first city to have the zoning fully approved as well. Is that correct?
I can look into that. I don't want to say 100%, but we'd probably be in very good standing.
Yeah. Terrific. Well, you know, we've all been working so hard on housing. I appreciate Sarah's thought that, you know, at some point, the market has to kick in and actually build this stuff. But I'm encouraged just to see, we're now talking about hundreds of units, you know, planning approval and estimated over the next couple of years. So I don't recall a time we were ever talking in terms of hundreds. So I do think we're in a new phase for housing, and I appreciate all the staff's work on this for sure. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll get that report turned in by April 1st.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Trivik, we will move on to 9D, which is a report. Oh, yeah. Crystal, do we have a public comment on this item?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to receive a report on our Community Characteristic Survey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Brian Carey, Communications Manager. So for this item, staff recommends that the city council receive a report on the results of the 2024 Community Characteristic Survey conducted by True North Research. Since 2018, the city has hired an independent consultant to conduct community surveys on an annual basis. Our consultant alternates between conducting a citizen opinion survey that measures the community's satisfaction with city services and priorities, and a community characteristic survey that seeks to understand resident lifestyles, things like transportation habits, work and living situations, and more. Both survey types are used to make strategic decisions about the council's goals, priorities, and budgeting. The city last conducted a community characteristic survey in 2022. Here to present the 2024 report via Zoom is Dr. Timothy McClary from True North Research, who will take us through some of the methodologies, questions, and key findings of this year's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am Dr. Tim McClary, President of True North Research, and we're a firm that, over the last two decades, has specialized in working with cities and other types of public agencies and using surveys to help them develop a statistically reliable understanding of the communities and the customers that they serve. Today, my business partner and I, as a two-person team, have designed and conducted over 1,300 research studies for public agencies, and about, oh, 450 of those have been for California cities. As Brian mentioned, we have had the privilege of working with the city. Actually, we've gone back over a decade working with San Carlos. In recent years, we have alternated between the sort of Community Satisfaction Survey, where residents are really commenting on the city's performance in providing municipal services. So it's an opportunity to sort of understand how residents view the city and your performance. Tonight's presentation of the Community Characteristic Survey is really sort of turning the lens around and looking and helping the city understand more about the residents that call San Carlos home. So everything from their lifestyles... So everything from their lifestyles, their daily habits, their, their work and commute status, the types of transportation they use, types of services they receive at their homes, those types of questions. This study is a little bit of shifting gears, a lot of different topics. And so as you'll see in tonight's presentation, although we're not covering all the topics that are contained in the full report, we will be kind of hop skipping and jumping across a variety of different, different questions that we ask at the survey. So as I go through tonight's PowerPoint presentation, I welcome questions from council as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. So next slide? Or do I need to control it from my side?
You, you can control it right now, or if you'd like, I can help progress it.
Let me see. I'm sorry, maybe you should advance.
Sure.
I'm not seeing the button here.
Yeah, and thank you, Dr. McClary. And I'll just say, everyone should feel free to chime in with their questions as we go through. There's a lot of questions here, and I think taking them in context will make a lot of sense.
Okay, sounds good. And we've covered this slide fairly well so far. But the one thing I will kind of point out the bottom is it was not intended to be a tracking study that would show the sort of impacts of the pandemic, but it wound up being a very interesting one. We completed the very first Community Characteristic Survey, I think, a month or two before the pandemic hit. And so we had this very interesting baseline study done in 2019. The pandemic hits, and it created this really great opportunity to understand how, when we came back in 2022, with the second wave of the Community Characteristic Survey, we could see sort of how that had changed a lot of things. Employment status, work arrangements, the types of services people were now receiving at their home, the sense of community connectedness, et cetera. And so again, not, not something that was designed, were part of the original design, but it wound up being a very interesting opportunity to look at that. And you'll see in today's presentation or tonight's presentation, we're not only showing the results of 2024 polling, we're also, where appropriate, showing the results from 2022 as well as 2019. Next slide, please. Okay, so before we actually dive into the results, helpful to take a moment to review the methodology of the study or how we went about conducting the study. We started out with, we call a stratified random sample of adults in San Carlos that is representative of the community on, on all key demographics. Once we had selected our sample, we recruited using three different methods, email, text, and telephone, typically in that order. Both the email and the text invites had hyperlinks that someone could click to come in and take the survey. Those hyperlinks are all unique to that respondent. And so what that ensures is that when we send out invitations, only those people that we have invited to take the survey can access the site. They can complete it one time only. They can't sort of invite their 10 best friends to take the survey as well. And that way, we're protecting the integrity of the study. Individuals had the opportunity to participate either online, which is the way most people prefer to take it, or by telephone, whichever was their preference. And we had set out, I think, to do about 600 interviews. We walked back in the door with 712 completed interviews. So we had a really good, solid response to the survey. And with a sample size of 712 selected at random, what that creates is a margin of error for the, for the study of plus or minus 3.6% at the 95% confidence level. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results I'll be sharing with you tonight are within 3.6% of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adult residents. Next slide, please. So we open up the survey with a couple of open-ended questions. The first of which is we simply asked respondents to tell us what they like best about living in San Carlos. By open-ended, what I mean is we didn't provide the list that you see here and say, check one of the boxes. They got to tell us their own words, what they like best about living in San Carlos. We went back and reviewed those verbatim responses and then grouped them into the categories you see here. So at the very top of the list, just about one out of four, 24% of respondents mentioned the small-town feeling of San Carlos as a thing they like best about living in the community. That, by the way, has always been the number one since we started doing the survey in 2019. So in the last three cycles, small-town feeling is at the top of the list of what people like about living in San Carlos, followed by the downtown area, 23%, mentions of safety or low crime in the city at 19%. And then the nice community neighbors at 19%, and it's a friendly, family-oriented community. One of the changes from 2022 to 2024 is the rise of mentions of the safety and low crime rate in San Carlos as one of the things they like best about the community. That was not in the top five in 2022, and it is today. Next slide, please.
So in that last slide, we asked-- Oh, Tim, sorry. Can I ask you one question? Just, can you just clarify on this one? Is this where people asked, was it multiple choice? Or they, I mean, where they just say it's sort of, here's the one thing that you, that comes to mind? So it's just sort of their top priority, their singular idea?
Yeah, on the last slide, it was the one thing you like best about living in San Carlos. So they got to respond with one. Every once in a while, you'll get somebody who will, who will double it up. And that's why it says percent of respondents. But yes, it's asking them about kind of the, the one thing they like best about living in the community. Similarly, on this slide, we sort of flipped the coin around and said, okay, you know, if you could change one thing about San Carlos, what is the thing you would most like to change? So here again, we're asking them to think top of mind. It's open-ended. We didn't provide them with the list. And they got to tell us one thing that was the thing that they'd most like to change about the city. And so you can see at the very top of that list, you have limit growth and development at about 13%. Like the last slide, where the number one issue was, has been the same number one going back to 2019. It's the same for this slide too. Limiting growth and development has been the number one item on this list going back to 2019. You also see number two there, nothing comes to mind, not sure, at about 12%. And if you scan down a little bit lower, you're going to see no changes desired, everything is fine at 5%. So you've got about 17% of residents who, when you think about the nature of this question, you know, if we can make one thing to make San Carlos a better place to live, what change would you like to see? And they're kind of stuck for an answer. They say, you know, I don't want to change anything or nothing comes to mind. So those are residents who are obviously clearly very content with the community and don't really see a need for any changes. Beyond that, enforcing traffic laws, 8%, providing more affordable housing, 8%, and reducing traffic congestion to 7%. I, I sometimes get asked, well, how is it possible that limiting growth and development's number one and providing more affordable housing is number four? Doesn't that seem sort of contradictory? And it isn't contradictory. It's just important to keep in mind that these are different people, right? So for some people, they're really focused on living in growth and development. For other people, their number one issue is providing more affordable housing. The other thing I'll point out about this slide is that, keep in mind, this is asking somebody in a top-of-mind situation, what's the sort of the single thing that they'd most like to change? It doesn't mean, as you look down these lists, you see improving parking, for example, at 4.6%. That doesn't mean that just 4.6% of people care about parking, right? What it means is 4.6% think improving parking is the most important issue facing the community. Same thing for swimming pools, I think. You have swimming pool showing up at about 3% who say providing a community swimming pool is the most important issue facing the community. But when we did a survey last time, looking at kind of the types of community amenities that people would like to see, you had 63% of residents say that there were not enough public swimming pools in the community. So again, just keep in mind what we're looking at here. It's the percent that say it's the most important issue. It doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't mention that, they don't care about it. Next slide, please. So turning to sort of living in San Carlos, we asked individuals whether they anticipate that they would still be living in San Carlos 10 years from now. And you can see that in 2024, about 55% of residents indicated that they expected to still be living in San Carlos 10 years from now. That's slightly higher than we saw in 2022 and 2019. If you dig in behind these results and you look at it by different subgroups, there's a couple that, you know, clearly it makes a difference. One is homeownership. If you already own your home in San Carlos, 68% of those individuals expect to still be living in the community 10 years from now. It's also quite a bit higher for residents that are 35 years or older. So if you're 34 or younger, you're, you anticipate you're probably going to, a higher percentage of them anticipate moving on in the 10 years. But if you're over 35, that's where you start to see higher numbers anticipating staying in San Carlos. Next slide, please. So in the prior presentation, there was some data that presented on the number of ADUs permitted in the city. We actually, in the survey, asked a combination of questions about ADUs. We asked residents whether, first of all, do they have an ADU on their property? Or do they plan to build an ADU in the future? And then for those that have one now or plan to build one in the future, the question is whether they intend to sort of rent that unit out for, or do rent that unit out for supplemental income or not. And this pie chart sort of combines it all together. What we find is about 10%, and by the way, this is among single-family homes, right? Because ADUs are found on those types of parcels. We found about 10% of San Carlos residents we surveyed that were single-family homeowners indicated that they either have an ADU currently, that's about 5% of our sample, or they plan to build an ADU in the future. That's the other 5%. When we combine that with whether they plan to rent or own, or I'm sorry, rent that unit out, what you see, what you see is about 1% currently have an ADU and rent it out. About 2% plan to build an ADU in the future and rent it out. And then you've got about 7% who have an ADU or plan to build an ADU, but have no plans to rent it. So that's how that breaks out. Next slide, please. Shifting to community engagement, we asked individuals to tell us how engaged and connected they feel to the San, to the San Carlos community on this scale of very somewhat slightly or not at all engaged and connected. The results you see on this slide show how 2024 compares to 2022 and 2019. You can see that prior to the pandemic, we had somewhat higher percentage of folks who were saying that they felt at least somewhat engaged to the San Carlos community. When the pandemic hit, you can see one of the things that changed was there was a drop in this feeling of connectedness, kind of understandable when we're all locked in our houses and our back rooms and we're, you know, forced to, to practice social distancing in the interest of public health and just not able to really engage with our friends or community as much. Since that point, and now in 2024, we're starting to see things rebound back to those pre-pandemic patterns. And in 2024, we had 53%. The majority of residents we spoke with indicated they felt at least somewhat engaged and connected to their San Carlos community. Here again, when you dig in behind these results and you look at it by different subgroups, you find that, you know, feelings of connectivity with the community are higher among those who have lived in the city at least five years, those who live in single-family residences, homeowners, households with children, and individuals 35 to 54 years of age.
Tim, can I, sorry, can I ask one, not on this one, I just wasn't fast enough on your previous ADU slide?
Sorry.
And I don't know that I need new data for this, but I'm just curious sort of for next time. It would be interesting, I think, to get how many, not necessarily rental, but are used for housing, right? Because I could see where there could be parents or children who may not be paying rent, but we're getting housing unit, it's being used for housing. So I don't know if there's a way to phrase the question that way. The rental's great, but also any kind of housing use is useful, I think, for us as well.
So are you thinking about, are you, are you, is the question whether if they aren't renting it out, are they using it as a resident? Like, for example, I have an ADU on my property. My mom lives in it.
Right.
Right? And so I don't rent it.
Right. But it's used for housing.
Or you think it's an office versus, say, an office space?
Yeah, I think office versus used for housing would be interesting because like in your case with your mom not, assuming if she's not paying rent, it's still being used for housing, which is a good thing, is what we'd like to see it used for. So, you know, you may, I don't know if you capture any of those who aren't rent, who may not by the question say, well, I'm not renting it, but my daughter or my son is using it, or my mother, mother-in-law, whatever the case may be.
Yeah, I think that is, I mean, the assumption is it's being used for housing. It's just probably a family member, right, who's not being, it's not renting to, whether that's, in my case, my mom. You know, I also have a, a daughter who at some point might wind up back in it, right? As opposed to saying using it as, you know, building an ADU and using it as an office.
Right. And I think, I mean, I've used ours, we have one as like a guest, you know, when we have people coming to visit, that's where they stay. So I think there's some, there's different flexibility. So I'd like to understand if it is being used more permanently for housing. I think that would be a good data point for us for sort of for next, next time.
Perhaps it's, is it occupied by a full-time resident might be the question.
Yeah, something along those lines. I think it'd be good information for us for the next survey. The next time.
Okay, that's, that's great. That's a great angle. Okay, I'm just taking a note here. Okay.
I had a similar question. I know with so many young families moving in, a lot of the ADUs are used for au pairs. So that is actually housing, right? But it's not rented.
Well, that's a good question. That's a good angle too, right?
I mean, I, I think the full-time resident kind of captures what we want our housing used for as opposed to office or part-time or, you know, occasionally when the in-laws show up. So I really think if there's a full-time resident in there, I think that is what we'd like to know.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm just, I'm taking notes here, and I'm sure Brian's taking notes as well. Okay. There we go. Yeah. So in the last slide, we saw that a sense of connectivity with San Carlos kind of took a dip in the pandemic, but then rebounded somewhat in 2024. When we asked, interestingly enough, about whether they participate or belong to any organized community groups in San Carlos, that percentage really hasn't changed much, as you can see here. About anywhere from 29.5% in 2019 down to 28% in 2024, percentage of residents that say they participate in some sort of organized community group. Here again, we see that participation is higher among people who are homemakers, interestingly enough. So if they, they're stay-at-home, those who have children in the home, single-family resident, people who live in single-family residences as well as townhomes, homeowners as well as those 45 to 54 were the most likely to report being engaged in a community group. Now, shifting gears on the next slide, we turn to employment. And you can see here the trends in employment from 2019 to 2024. There's been a little bit of an uptick in, in the percentage who were employed full-time. But between 22 and 2024, it's really stable with the exception of that percentage at the top there that said that they're in-between jobs or unemployed. So we've seen a, a bit of a tick up at the time we took this survey in those that were in-between jobs compared to 2022. It's a small change. It's from 2% to 4%. But when you're dealing at that sort of extreme end of the distribution, small changes can be statistically significant. And that's why you see that dagger symbol or cross symbol right next to that number. Okay, next slide, please. Keeping in with the employment sort of topic, we asked individuals to describe their occupation to us. I've learned over time that you just have to do this as an open-ended question and then go in and look at all those responses and then group them into the categories you see here. You can't share this list with people and get an accurate plot because everyone just says other. And so when we did that though, you can see that 20%. First of all, among San Carlos residents, you see a pretty high concentration of higher-paid skilled professions. So at the very top, professional specialties, not IT. So you want to be thinking here, accountants, lawyers, engineers, scientists. Those accounted for one out of five of your employed residents. Administrative office workers, 12%, supervisors, managers, 11%, executives, 11%, IT, 10%, sales, and then teachers. Next slide. In terms of the industries, this one's really striking. One-third of the adult residents we spoke with who are employed indicated that they work in IT. So 33%. That was followed by education and then medical and social services, biosciences and pharmaceuticals, and then business services. Next slide. I love this slide because it is the, probably the single best example of how our lives were turned upside down by the pandemic. And then it is, where do you actually work? So in 2019, we asked this question. 86% of San Carlos residents commuted outside their home to an office location for their work. 13% worked from home. Pandemic hits in 2022, obviously dramatic change, where you had 47% who were working from home exclusively and another 28% who were working from home part-time and working off-site part-time. And just one out of four, 25% of your employed residents were still commuting outside the home to their job every day. And now what you see in 2024, after the pandemic has subsided, is things have shifted a lot, but we're really not, this is a new normal. It's, although, yes, the percentage of folks working from home on a-- It's although, yes, the percentage of folks working from home on a everyday basis has declined a lot from 2022, we're landing at 19%. It's still a bit north of where we were in 2019. But the big change is in hybrid work range relationships. So you have 44% of individuals who say they work off-site part of the time and they work at home part of the time. Just 36% of San Carlos residents are commuting to an office location or work site every day for their job. Next slide, please.
I was just going to say that, that is a fascinating slide. And I wonder, you know, do you have, that shows such change in such a short period of time, but you just wonder if this is the new normal and we'll study out from there. Have you, do you have any insight into that?
I think, I think we are sort of landing where we're going to land. It's funny because I've done panel and so like, like time series tracking studies for San Diego County, I've done it for Orange County, I've done some, a little bit of this with the Bay Area. And what you're finding is there were these dramatic changes during the pandemic. Things have definitely migrated back towards pre-pandemic patterns in a lot of respects. But what we kept finding is that over, you know, I was tracking in '21, '22, '23 into '24, things seemed to have really stabilized between '23 and '24. And expectations for the future tend to align with where we are today for the most part. Whereas if when you ask people in '22 what the next year looked like, there was a lot of expected change and that change in fact happened. I think we're settling in where you are going to have a much smaller percentage of your workers who are full-time commuting to a location off-site. You're going to have a lot more who are working hybrid. You will not have as many, obviously, as we did during the pandemic, working from home full-time. What is interesting, though, is, you know, and I work with a lot of transportation planning agencies too, is on the one hand, the notion of sort of teleworking from a potential impact on the commute and VMT and emissions that are associated with travel could be very positive. But the other thing you find out is that the people who work from home, they take, they tend to take a lot of midday trips. And so although they're not commuting to work, and so they're not contributing those vehicle miles to their, to, you know, the, the, the transportation system, they are taking more midday trips that sort of offset that benefit. So it's interesting, but you know, to answer your original question, I do think that we're settling in on this new normal.
Got it, thank you. And I would imagine those trips are generally fewer miles, so that's probably a net good.
Mr. Mayor, can I just jump, jumping along those lines? Tim, can you tell us, do you know if this is a, a regional thing? I, I've heard anecdotally that California and the Bay Area in particular, since the pandemic, tends to work more from home and that in other areas of the country. They've required more and more people to come back to work. Is this really a California thing, a Bay Area thing? Do you know?
Yeah, I can't speak to outside of the state. I can only speak to select parts of California where we've done these studies. And I will say that this basic pattern of, you know, leveling out with a higher amount of, you know, remote work, either full-time or part-time than where we were pre-pandemic is definitely the case in everywhere I've looked. But I can't speak to how that looks the rest of the nation.
Thank you.
So among this, what this slide shows is that we had 63% of respondents who are employed, who work from home at least part-time. So they're either a full-time at-home person or they're a part-time at-home person. And when we asked those individuals, those 63%, how many days a week they work from home, you can see here that the majority of them are working three-plus days a week from home, right? With about, almost, about 19% of them working full-time every day from home. Next slide, please. So transitioning then from employment into transportation, we asked individuals, when they're traveling in San Carlos, how often did they use each of the modes that you see here? Obviously, using a personal vehicle is the dominant mode for most people. But you do see a lot of walking, right? From their home to a local store or restaurant. Less Uber and Lyft now today, I'm guessing, than we had prior to the pandemic. But then here again, riding bicycles, you're also seeing that being a significant number of people as well. By the way, this has not changed in significant degree in the last two years. So the pattern we're seeing here is pretty similar to the pattern that we saw in 2022.
Tim, something I'm really interested in is how many cars our households have. We've, you know, there's new state mandates that are relieving some parking ratios. And we've also been looking at projects with rather low parking ratios. And, and I'm just, you know, something I want a better understanding of is how many cars are folks who live in single-family residence own on average? And how many cars are multifamily residents own on average per household? Do we have that data?
It's not, we did ask some questions about cars, which I'll show you in a minute, but it's, it's not going to give you what you're asking for there in terms of volume, right? But that is something that we can ask for the next time around.
I, I think that's an important one because we're, we're, you know, definitely looking at much lower parking ratios. And I think we need to start to understand what that's going to mean on average. So I think that's a good one for us to look at.
Okay. So speaking of cars, again, not the question you asked, but we did ask individuals whether they own or lease a hybrid gas and electric vehicle as well as an all-electric vehicle. And you can see that, you know, the, the hybrid gas-type vehicle has sort of flattened out over time. But look at the growth in all-electric just in the last five years, from 8% of respondents in 2019 to 27% of respondents in 2024 indicating they own an all-electric vehicle. So clearly, a big shift in just five years.
Yeah, appreciate that, Tim. I bought two in 2022, so I might have helped there. Just a quick question, this is just a minor point, but is there a, like a software reason why you count the years up right to left? It kind of keeps kind of hurting my brain to think that way.
Well, it just hurts my brain to go the other way, I think. You know, yeah, I've always found that people read right to left. And since this is a study in 2024, we start with the most recent years. So that's what they see, and then they can go back in time. Yeah, you could easily flip it around the other way, but I've always just found it easier to think of it that way and.
Yeah, it's a minor point, I just, I live in a up and to the right world, I guess, so. All right, thank you.
He's left brain, you're right brain.
Yeah, perhaps. And okay, next slide. And so there is a lot more detail in the full report if you dug into that. And there's plenty of questions in there that we didn't have space in this PowerPoint to present tonight. But when you, and as I mentioned at the outset, this is a study where we're shifting gears a lot, right? We're coming from topic to topic. And so one way to sort of organize all these different topics and think a little bit about what does, what does it all mean, is to think about, well, where have the changes occurred, right? Where are things moving and what has stayed the same over the last few years? And so that's what I've done here. And again, some of these points, I don't have a slide on here, but it's worth mentioning. So, you know, obviously, the most dramatic shift in the slides I showed you today, as well as in the full report, has to do with work arrangements. And, you know, that have changed in 2019 to 2022 with the pandemic. And then now we're landing at a place, which I think is reasonably stable, where you're seeing a lot of hybrid working arrangements, as well as you still have about one out of five residents who are working every day from home. During the pandemic, one of the things that we all got used to was having food and packages delivered to our house. And what's interesting is even though the pandemic has subsided, we still have sort of a fondness for that convenience. And so the percentage of residents who are having these home deliveries increased during the pandemic and they've sort of remained elevated ever since. So we're, we're seeing more of that happening. EV ownership has tripled. Internet and video game usage is up in the last few years. Consumption of radio and TV and news is down since 2019. In our more recent poll, what we did see is a higher percentage of newer residents, for whatever reason, as well as those who rent their homes. So we were seeing a bit of a shift in that in the recent survey. And as we talked about a little bit, you know, we saw, I had some questions in here about community connectedness. I didn't show that there was, we also asked a question about how familiar they are with their neighbors. And we saw a little bit of a decline in that as well, which makes sense if you've got an influx of newer residents to some degree. It would make sense that the familiarity would be a little bit lower with neighbors. As far as what stayed the same or minimal changes, we're seeing pretty consistent levels of community engagement and participation in community groups among residents over the last five years. The employment status in terms of employed, full-time, part-time, homemaker, retired, et cetera, that has changed very little over the last five years. Same with the industry and occupations that your residents tend to work in. The percentage who own a home-based home is also consistent over this period. We haven't seen much change in terms of the mode use when traveling in San Carlos. And then here again, use of services to house. We talked about deliveries, those have gone up and, and stayed elevated. Use of household cleaning and landscape services actually remained pretty steady over this time. So that is the end of my slides. I welcome any additional questions from council if there are any.
I have one. Based on this survey, do you know the percentage of the newer residents?
I can look that up. I actually have the report here on my left screen. Hold on. So in this poll, we had about 22% of respondents who indicated they'd lived in San Carlos less than a year. That was 18% in 2022 and about 12% in 2019. So there seems to be this growing slice of, of newer residents and a decline in, in long-term residents.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Cullens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, Tim, great survey. Thank you for this very extensive, it was very eye-opening too. Some things were predictable, but overall, it was very educational. I'm just, you know, we had a presentation earlier about housing applications. And one of the things that was mentioned was that there were 32 new net ADU building permits issued last year. But it's, it's amazing to me that 69% of our residents have absolutely no plans to build an ADU. And I don't know why that is, I'm not asking you to speculate on that. I, I don't know, maybe it's we have small lot sizes. But I think, and this is going to be a theme to my question is, or my questions is that, do you see any pattern in other cities? Are we more like other cities or less like other cities in this regard?
See, you are one of the few cities that actually does this type of survey, the community characteristic surveys. Lots of cities I work with are focused on the other survey that we do for the community, which is, you know, how do residents perceive the city's performance? And so I don't have comparable data on the ADUs. I, I wish I did, but I have no comparison for you on that question.
And I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that the part about, you know, the 63% wanted a, a pool in the last survey because I was getting a little depressed seeing that only 2.5%. And I, and I was thinking, maybe we just need a question that says, you know, what community benefit would you like to see in this town? And maybe that's the question you asked in the last survey. Did you ask something similar to that? I don't remember.
Yeah, it was about, it was asking about the community amenities and whether there's kind of too many, just the right amount, or too few of these in the community. And there was a widespread, like at 63% of, of residents pointed out that there's not, there's too few public swimming pools in the community. And that, I think, was one of the highest rated items in terms of too few.
Okay. The, the next question I had was the question about how long have you lived in San Carlos? Significant drop there. In fact, you said statistically significant. What are we to make of that? There's a 12% drop in the last five years of people who have lived here for, well, what, 15 years or longer?
Yeah.
Is that another thing where other cities are seeing the same thing or not?
You know, I, again, that's another question that I don't, you know, most cities aren't asking that question as, in the same way. You know, if it were just one year and it did this, I think, well, you know, maybe, maybe this is a little bit of a statistical anomaly just in terms of the random sample we, we grabbed. We just happened to wind up with, you know, more newer residents. Except that that, that's been trending that way since 2019, right? That there's been this sort of steady drop in those who indicated they've lived in the city 15 years or longer, right? And a, and a corresponding increase in newer residents. It's possible that you could, you could, you know, you could theorize a lot of things here, right? That, oh, well, maybe as rents get higher, you know, you're having some people who can't afford to stay in San Carlos and they're moving out and other people are moving in. You could have that scenario, you could have people saying, we're going to sell our home and cash out and move to Idaho like my mom did at one point. Now she's back to California. You, you know, there's all sorts of things you could theorize for. I don't know the answer to that. I just know that this, it's sort of trended that way for, over the past five years.
And I can, I can tell you that several of my friends that have been around the town a long time and are my age are starting to move away and, you know, move to retirement communities and, and whatever. All right, I, I may have some other questions, but I don't want to dominate the conversation. So I'm going to yield my, rest of my questions until, and see how the other council members respond. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just actually don't have a question, but I wanted to kind of pitch an idea for a future question. I'm wondering if we could work in a question on childcare? And could we ask, this is a great opportunity to survey our residents, if they, you know, have a child younger than four? Are they home with a parent or family member? Do you have a nanny? Do they go to a commercial daycare? Or do you use a home-based childcare program? It's something that would be very specific to our city, but it's something, I'm actually really sad that we missed this opportunity to put it in this survey because we're grappling with this. And it would really be helpful, not only to know where the community stands now as a baseline, but also watch it in the coming years as we work on our childcare capacity in the city. So wanted to throw that out there. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. I would support that. And then I also saw some of my colleagues nodding their heads when I mentioned that number of cars issue. So, I mean, let us know if we're overloading this survey. There may be opportunities to drop other questions. But I do appreciate that we do work hard to keep the questions consistent. It gives us that kind of longitudinal look at this. But, you know, you're, you're the professional, Tim, so let us know how we can work those in as well, please.
Yeah, the one thing I was, as you were mentioning that, I was like, this is ringing a bell, the childcare questions. And we did have, we have those built into the other survey. So we had questions about whether they're searching for childcare services, how difficult they found it. So we do have some of those questions, they're just in the, what is now the odd-year survey.
Got it. So we'll see that next year?
Should be.
Yeah, we'll look forward to that. And maybe we could drill down a little bit more on the exact, what's the word I'm looking for? Purnita, the, the person who's offering the childcare, that would be helpful. The provider, yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Crystal, could you go back to slide number five? Yeah, thank you. And, and I just, just a couple observations I'd just like to make. And you covered it very well, Tim, and thank you for all the good work here. But I, you know, we, we spent an awful lot of time as a council and as staff going through what our priorities should be. We work through a whole strategic planning process and develop goals and objectives and work plans. And I just want to highlight a couple of things because, you know, I very much view our job as doing things in response to community concerns. And, you know, I think this, this is a good news result that I'm looking at here because our top concerns, we seem to be already focused on. And I just wanted to call attention to a couple of things. First, I appreciated highlighting that the combination of people where nothing came to mind to the question of what change they would like to see to improve San Carlos. And if you add that to no changes desired, everything is fine. That's 17%. I, I think I would combine those and say, most of our residents had really nothing to say when they were. when they were asked this question, which that's surprising and, you know, says something pretty good. But then you look at what else is on here. Provide more affordable housing. Earlier in this very meeting, we were talking about all the good work we're doing there with hundreds of new units expected over the next couple of years. Reduce traffic congestion. We had an agenda item this evening on that. That is another top goal and a focus of this year. Improve, maintain infrastructure road sidewalks. We have recently approved several sidewalk projects. And last year, we approved $35 million over the next five years, so $7 million a year on improving our roads, which is a historic level of spend for our city. Improve, provide more bike lanes. We're extending those bike lanes on San Carlos Avenue as we speak. Make Laurel Street pedestrian-only and improve our downtown area. We're in the midst of a, well, first, last November, we did close the 700 block of Laurel Street permanently. And we're in the middle of a specific plan, which will involve an upgrade of our entire downtown area over time. And all that, and reduce taxes and fees was second from the bottom. So I just, you know, just observations that I think the work we do on strategic planning and setting goals is, you know, to some extent hitting the mark. So I think it's worth pausing. And, you know, and the one thing I would note on the other side of the ledger is the third, the number three item, enforce traffic laws. We do hear a lot about that from our residents, and I'm not sure we've really made any recent investment or additional focus on that. So, you know, just an observation. Beyond that, that's all I have. Looks like Councilmember Collins has a follow-up.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Tim, one thing I noticed was rather lower on the list was improved parking. And I don't remember where that fit on the list five years ago. I think six years ago, we finished Wheeler Plaza and we've closed Laurel Street in that time. And I'm wondering, do you have a way of checking to see how that, that item compares to several years ago? I personally am hearing that complaint less often. I don't know about the rest of my colleagues, but I'm hearing it less.
Let me check real quick. I actually probably can bring this up. Sorry. It's loading. Here we go. It was number three in 2019 at 15%.
Wow.
So it is, you've apparently addressed it in a way that
Well, to John's point.
Have it go from number three all the way down to the middle of the pack.
Yeah, well, to John's point, a lot of the things that are on here is good news that things that people want, we've been working on. So we've, you know, I'd like to say we've been paying attention.
Yeah, I think the big change there is we opened up Wheeler Plaza, which, you know, I never have any problem driving in and parking when I go downtown.
Great, thank you. That was all.
Great.
Terrific. I don't see any other comments. Is there any public comment on this item? Crystal?
I do not have any speaker slips for this item, and there are no hands on Zoom.
We'll pause for just a minute, see if anyone raises their hand on Zoom. This would be the time for public comment. Do you see any hands, Crystal?
No, there are no hands.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you, Dr. McLarnie. Appreciate all your good work and help on this one.
Thank you, much appreciated. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item 10A, which is considering a resolution adopting a new beekeeping ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a short recess?
Yes, it's, that's a good idea. It is 9:11. Let's come back at 9:20. We're in recess now. Thank you. All right, we'll come back to order and move on to item 10A, which is considering a resolution adopting a new beekeeping ordinance. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Niall Blackburn, Assistant City Manager. I'll also be doing the presentation this evening.
Terrific, thank you, Niall.
Thank you. In February 2022, the council heard a presentation from staff and considered in a study session our beekeeping regulations. And at that time, there were two documents that governed beekeeping in the city, and that would be chapter 6.04 of the animal code of our ordinance and also a 2009 administrative policy, which listed a number of requirements that applicants would have to meet in order to get a permit. One of those requirements was that you could only have one hive per 10,000 square feet of your residential parcel with a maximum of two. Also, at that time in 2022, a permit was $365 per year. The city had never received a permit application. And in the 10-year period between 2012 and 2022, the city received two complaints related to beekeeping. After we presented, we heard a lot of public comment at the meeting and also before the meeting via emails and letters. And most of the comments were from individuals who were proponents of recreational or hobby beekeeping. And they were a majority and they had made three primary types of comments. One was that the city's current policy acted as a ban on beekeeping. And the reason why they say that is because of that 10,000 square feet requirement. Only 16% of the residential parcels in the city of San Carlos are that large, so that would necessarily exclude everyone else. They also thought the restrictions regarding setback from fences and neighbors' yards and other requirements were too cumbersome. And the group also said that our approach was based on misperceptions about bees and oftentimes, you know, what we think we're seeing is not necessarily a honeybee, but maybe a wasp or a yellow jacket. And also, folks explained that our approach to regulation didn't promote environmental or agricultural concerns. Also, at that time, we heard from folks who said, look, you know, bee stings can be life-threatening. And if, you know, somebody lives near you with the risk of an anaphylactic reaction and can't breathe and could potentially die, you know, that should be enough reason to not promote residential beekeeping. At the conclusion of that meeting, council gave staff four directives. They wanted more data on honeybee stings. And I looked back at the meeting and it was specifically, do we have any emergency room data about how many bee stings occur in our county? And with the help of one of the members of the Beekeepers Guild, we were able to look into some county information and found that there is no such data. In fact, we were told that they could not comment on the matter because of the lack of information about it. Another thing, but, okay, so the county didn't have information on honeybee stings, but staff also did some research and found some CDC data that found between 2000 and 2017, on average, there were 62 deaths in the United States per year due to hornet, yellow jacket, or bee stings. In addition, the Stanford Children's Hospital website mentioned that honeybees and yellowjackets are the primary culprits when it comes to stings and that yellowjackets are more allergic or cause more of an allergic reaction. And they make recommendations that someone should always have an EpiPen with them if they suspect that they have an allergy. And then the other point of council direction we received was to consider regulations that address actual bee behavior. At the time of that meeting, also, a representative from the Beekeepers Guild said, you know, there are two types of behaviors that could be considered nuisances, and that would be flyway and water. And flyway is just the direction that a bee flies when, and a group of bees fly when they exit their hive. And, you know, if they are unruly or not contained, or they don't have a barrier to hit and then fly up from, they might form sort of an unruly mass. And it was this person that actually recommended that it's best to have two hives so that you can face them toward each other and so that when the bees come out of the hive, they kind of bump into each other and they fly up over the height of an average person. So flyway was something that they recommended that we regulate if we were to regulate anything at all. And that was not included in our existing regulations. And the other thing they said that could be a nuisance is lack of water. So they suggested that we always, that we require a water source if we were to regulate. And the reason for that is bees will go searching for water. And if they don't have a freshwater source, they might go next door to the neighbor's pool and create a nuisance that way. So the third thing we were asked to consider is a scenario where neighbors may have life-threatening reaction to stings. And the fourth is to consider feedback from other cities that had recently relaxed their regulations. So regarding the case of the highly sensitive neighbor, at the time of the 2022 report, I wasn't really aware of this section, but both our code, current and back in 2022, and our policy proposed and the 2009 version have language that states that a permit may be granted if all conditions are met and the issuance of the permit will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So this clause or these clauses give staff the So this clause, or these clauses, give staff the ability to deny a permit if they are presented with a case that could be of serious health to a neighbor in the event that a permit were issued, and there were, there were no other things that could be done to resolve the situation. So grants are, grants of permits are discretionary. Even if somebody were to meet the requirements, we wouldn't have to necessarily grant the And here is a map provided by the Beekeepers Guild, and it shows that San Carlos has one of the most restrictive beekeeping policies. These five other cities that I've listed here had relaxed their regulations in recent years. We reached out to all five of them. Burlingame reported two complaints since 2018, and they referred those complaints to the San Mateo County Beekeepers Guild, which is a nonprofit organization. Foster City, Redwood City, San Mateo have not had any complaints. And Pacifica had an inquiry, and it was related to a neighbor wanting to understand the ordinance better so that they could discuss it with their neighbor. Before I jump to our recommendations, I want to point out two changes that have occurred since that study session in 2022. The annual permit fee was reduced to $150. We're saying per project, it means per property. And the word "bees" was recently added to two sections of the code. In January, I believe, we updated our animal control code to align with the county, and we used that opportunity to add the word "bees" to two sections of the code, when before it was implied, we thought, let's just make it explicit. And so the word "bees" was added to 6.04.390. And I think, more importantly, 6.04.430 was added, and that says, "For bees and beehives, regulations adopted by resolution of the City Council shall apply to the keeping of bees and beehives on private property in the city." It's referring to our policy. So what this section does is it allows the council to make changes through resolution of the regulations or the administrative policy without having to make updates and changes to the code. So if you were to adopt the policy today, and you decide a year later it's not working, it wouldn't be that hard to change it and update it. It is staff's recommendation, based on the 2022 recommendations and what we heard from the council, to require a permit to continue regulating beekeeping and require a permit under our code and our administrative policy, which should be updated. We decided it's important to get rid of all the extraneous requirements that don't really relate to bee behavior, and limit to two hives per residential parcel regardless of lot size. So in that sense, we would be relaxing our rules and only controlling for flyway and water. And by doing that, even that's a relaxation. So for flyway, we're saying, you know, you can use some method to control flyway. You don't have to build a six-foot wooden barrier and get into the details the way the policy previously stated. And of course, we previously had water in there. We just added a line to say, you know, have a freshwater source that doesn't become a mosquito breeding ground. And we encourage collaboration with free, with the Beekeepers Guild and their free services. They offer a lot of great resources. They can go to homes for free, and if you want bees, it'll tell you what types of plants to plant to encourage bees. Or if you don't like bees, they can look at your property and say, well, you know, I would recommend you get rid of these plants, or, and maybe you should plant this type of vegetation to avoid attracting bees to your property. They take care of swarms. They offer classes. They recently offered one at the library. They just have a lot of resources to individuals. And, you know, we considered possibly conditioning a permit on showing evidence of collaborating with the Beekeepers Guild. But when we looked into it, we realized it's, it's a nonprofit agency. We had never partnered that way to promote a city regulation or code with a nonprofit. It didn't make sense for what we wanted to do. However, we think it is important to have a partnership and to post vital information on the city's website. So if the council were to adopt our updated proposed policy this evening, we would definitely post something on our website and encourage that folks reach out to the Guild. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Trigve, thank you, Niall. That was a good and thorough report and a clear recommendation, so thank you for that. Looks like Councilmember Collins may have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Niall. It was a very good report. And thanks also to your staff for the work that they've put. I know it's been a couple of years now that you've been working and studying and crafting this ordinance. Couple of questions. I was thinking, could you walk me through the process of getting a permit? But it's pretty well detailed here on what someone needs to do on the beekeeping practices and administrative policy. But one of my questions is, if, let's say I want to, I want to put a hive in. I don't see anything here that suggests to me that I should notify my neighbors or talk to anyone. Do we not require that, or do we maybe orally encourage it?
That was something that was raised in 2022, and we decided not to include it. We decided with, with this permit requirement, with our regulations, and with sharing the support and resources of the Guild, that it probably wouldn't necessitate a consultation with neighbors, because at that point, everything should work the way it's supposed to. There was formerly a notice requirement that we actually removed, and I think that was something more in line with the, that county program, the Beware Program that alerts neighbors. So we actually chose to remove that because it, we just didn't think it fell in that vital, we're limiting flyway, we're limiting water, we're addressing, not limiting, but we're addressing the things that we can actually control.
Is it something that we could put? It wouldn't be a requirement, but it would be a suggestion or a recommendation or something like that? I mean, at least encourage people to talk to their neighbors and say, hey, I'm going to be putting a couple of hives in my backyard.
I think that's a great idea, and I think that's something that we could include. Be a good bee neighbor on, on our website, and, you know, reach out to your neighbor if you have concerns, reach out to the Guild, consider these practices.
Okay. I also noticed that it says, "The Community Development Director, or his designee, shall inspect the premises on which the beehives will be located." So that basically, they want to make, obviously, get an idea of, is this going to be compliant? And are they following all the rules and everything? But then it says, "The permit is valid for 12 months." Is there a new inspection required annually?
Yes, that's assumed in the fee. So if we're charging annually, we will be inspecting annually.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Thank you, Niall, for the presentation. I appreciate all the work and research, and I liked the way you had everything in there, what we asked before, and then you delivered, so thank you. And I appreciate the work and outreach, I know, with a number of people in the community. So I'm, from my end, I guess the, you know, I, I'm, I like the idea that we have some sort of permit and some process in there. I do think that we should revisit the fees around that, because if we're not getting anything, then I'd rather have people be compliant than not compliant. So if the fees are prohibitive, I'd rather look at, you know, getting compliance and getting what we need to ensure sort of safety and as much as possible and, and to do that. So I think, I think you and I talked a while ago that there's, we're going to be looking at our fee updates soon, so that could be something to consider at that point around that. I also like the idea of, you know, I mean, I do think we should try to do some enforcement around people who aren't getting permits. If we're going to drop the fees to $50 a year, then there should be some enforcement to kind of bring people on, on, on board as well. So I think it's sort of a carrot stick. Let's, we'll make it easier for you. We're going to make it easier for you to do it, but you need to comply with the rules. And I don't think we've done that to date, because I think I've gotten multiple letters and say that there are hives in town that are not here legally, and I don't, just don't know that we do the enforcement. So less of a question, but I'd like to sort of see us look at the fees from that end. And then from the, you know, the neighbor's standpoint, you know, I, I don't have a problem with being a little more aggressive and saying, and aggressive is the right word, but say, hey, you should notify your neighbors. It's sort of a good thing to do, and if we, I don't mind having that requirement. It doesn't mean that you can't, but I think if we had some sort of, you can't just have, you know, we have some criteria for what is, what require, what would sort of make a permit not allowed, right, would, you know, deny it. It has to be some specific criteria on that. So if it's just saying, you notify your neighbors, and your neighbor says, well, I don't like that you have beehives, and that's not enough to do it, right? You need to have some sort of either doctor's note or medical note or some other thing that maybe, or there has some sort of health issue, you know, on top of that. So to me, that's, would be some of the things that I would be sort of interested in looking at. I like the fact that we're sort of making it more easy to have beehives, but I also feel at the same time, and we got some email from somebody talking about, like, if you're allergic to X, Y, and Z, you carry EpiPen. I also think you should feel safe in your house and in your, in your backyard, right? That should be a zone that is, so at least if you're in the, in notification and know what you're, what's, what's around you, you have some more control over the situation. And so, you know, it's one thing to say when I'm going to go out taking a walk, and I am at risk for something or do something, but in your own house, I feel like you should, you should have that safety and security.
And I, I hear what you're saying about the carrot stick approach, so maybe just having information on the website isn't enough. Maybe we do a mail or a postcard on the updated regulations so that everyone is aware of what the rules are, and, and that could help promote enforcement.
And I think that is good, and I think to also say that, you know, to sort of say that we've done this, but that we are going to start enforcing the rules as well. I think that is something that we can, we can tie together.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Niall, for that detailed presentation. Is there a way we can require classes? Or did you say that's not a possibility?
We could. We could, we could make it what we want it to be. We could say, provide proof of a course taken through Beekeepers Guild class, and with that proof of class, you can get a permit. I, I'm not sure what the city attorney thinks about that. I would offer that to him. And I also just think, again, you know, this was all about the balance. I think we started from a place where we were overly restrictive, and we were asked to relax. And I know we're getting messages from a large part of the community saying we're not relaxed enough still, and now I feel like we're adding things back on again, which is fine, because this is our community, and we can do what we think is best for our community. But I just want to caution, and I'll pass it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Niall. We could have, I don't know if it's a training requirement, but if, maybe it's a certification requirement that you've, that you've certified, that you've taken an online class or some sort of a program, that you have at least some basic understanding of how to, to handle bees and hives on your property. I mean, that might be something that we could, we could add to the, to the regulations and the policy, so certainly we could do that.
Thank you. And my second question is the fee. So beekeeping, as I researched in my time, it's expensive hobby, and I feel like the fee is going to prevent some of our participants from participating. And then I'll be, you know, I'll be like people putting in daycares that don't have permits because the fees are too high. It'll be that kind of situation. So I also agree with Councilmember Rack regarding the fees.
Thank you. And the fees will be updated in April, and they're based on number of staff hours that are used to consider the permit. So if we relax restrictions, then we can argue that there is less staff time involved, so the fee should go down. But if we require a validation of classes taken and confirmation that you've met with your neighbor and so forth, that may add time back. And so I think, again, it's the balancing act.
Great. Thank you, Purnita, and I think Councilmember Rack had a quick follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. And I appreciate the question about the, the classes and the certification. I almost would like to, I wonder if we can think about that as a, you either have your fee reduced or waived if you do the class, and if you don't, you can just pay the extra permit fee, and then there's incentive to do it, right? And, and that may be a way to do that as well, and kind of hit both.
Very creative.
All right. That, that's a thought. Thank you, Adam. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Niall, for the presentation and all the research staff did on this. I know that we received a lot of feedback, pros and cons to consider. Can you walk me through, so say I do have, you know, a person in my family who will go into anaphylactic shock with a bee sting, how, how would I find out that my neighbor is putting in a beehive under this new policy?
As written, without any notification, you wouldn't necessarily know.
Okay. And then, say I object, what would I have to do? How, how am I informed of how I object to the permit?
Would you mind taking that, Greg?
Yeah, I think we would probably want to have a, a notice provision that provides the concerned resident an opportunity to object before the permit was issued, maybe, you know, seven to 10 days from, from the notice going out. And that would enable the staff to, when we, when we go out and do the site inspection, to evaluate whether there's a way to mitigate the concern or whether or not to, whether or not to grant the permit or not.
So how would that notice go out? Is the city sending a notice to the neighbors saying that, you know, a certain resident is applying for a beekeeping permit?
Well, normally, the way we, it's up to the applicant to put out the notice, but this, it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, this is up to your discretion, but, you know, I would envision maybe that the adjacent property owners would be the, the universe of notice, but if you thought that was not an appropriate distance, we could make it a longer distance. But I think the impact is probably limited in that way.
Right. Maybe the adjacent and then the backyard neighbor or something, since the hive would be in the backyard, adjacent, all adjacent. But I'm still confused, how would they, how would they, we're not, there's no noticing, there's, there's no, there's nothing conceived in this policy of them getting advice that a hive is going in?
Right, we would have to add that in.
We'd add that in, okay. And then would they have to show a doctor's note? Like, how, how would they formally object? What, what kind of evidence would we require as part of that objection?
I mean, that's a very good question. I think it's whatever that resident feels is relevant to, to their objection. I mean, that could be one of the category of things that could be relevant for an objection, but, but people could raise other concerns as well, I suppose. I think some of those concerns we've tried to address in the policy, like requiring the water and, and, and having the fly, appropriate flyway. And I think a lot of this will be a, sort of an education process for everybody involved about what it means to have, you know, bees and your, you know, there's positives and there could be some negatives in certain circumstances. And what, what this policy, I think, is trying to do is create that balance, as Niall was talking about, between the positive and potentially adverse impacts.
Okay. I, I would just encourage us to think about objective, like we did, went through with the objective design standards, we need objective ways to measure the, the opposition so that it's not someone just saying, I don't, I don't like bees and, you know.
Yeah, and I, I hear that, but I, but I'm also reluctant to ask people for a doctor's note and their private medical information, too. So there's, there's, there's an issue there that we just normally don't deal with, but it's there.
Yeah, okay. We'll have to think about that. And then my final question, so staff is recommending against the nuisance complaint process. Could you kind of walk us through how that process works versus what staff is recommending?
I think what we're doing is, as part of this balancing, saying that there could be a set of facts that after we give a permit, a nuisance develops. be a set of facts that after we give a permit, a nuisance develops. So we have a revocation procedure to revoke a permit. We also have the ability, since it's an annual permit, to say, sorry, there was a problem, so we're not going to issue another permit for, in the, in the following year. And then, I, as the city attorney, I think having the permit is important, having a permit requirement is important, because when, when I am enforcing, I think that's the, the best way to get someone who is not complying, is they usually don't comply with a permit requirement either. And it's, it's, it's basically a citation that I can issue and create a record of noncompliance for enforcement purposes. So I think, yeah, the, that would be, I like that aspect of it, and then the, you know, I think, I think I've answered your question, though. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one follow-up question. Niall, do we know or have any idea how many people in San Carlos actually have beehives right now?
No.
Since there's no reporting.
We don't.
We don't, we have no idea?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Yeah, that's a good list of questions my colleagues had. Most of my questions were answered. One remaining is, just, I know it was detailed in what we got in writing, but, Niall, can you just explain briefly what the flyway requirement we're imposing would be?
Sure, no problem. In the policy, we state that care should be addressed to direct the bees' flight path, which is known as flyway, to avoid neighbors in the public. And the goal is that the bees should be directed to leave their hive boxes in an upward trajectory with the use of screenings, foliage, shrubs, trees, fencing, and other barriers, barriers to help minimize human and animal contact. That's the new proposed policy. Previously, there were restrictions on, you know, where the hives could be located, and we were requiring that the hives be surrounded by a solid fence, not less than six feet in height. And so we're removing the solid fence requirement and recognizing that there might be other tools that can be used to direct their movement up and out.
I see. So basically, wherever that opening is, it has to go against something. It can't just be into the open yard. That's basically what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So it could be a bush, it could be another hive, it could be a fence. Can it be the fence on the edge of their property?
Yes.
Okay. So it just can't go into the open yard?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think those are my questions. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to public comment, and then we'll come back around for discussion. We will take public comment in the room first, but now would be the time to raise your hand on Zoom if you're interested in participating remotely. Crystal, do we have any public comment in the room?
Yes, we have five speaker slips. First up is Sam Hersberg.
Welcome, Sam.
You'll be followed, you'll be followed by Marika De Bruin.
Good evening, Mayor Dugan, and City Council, and Niles. Just as background, I live in the greater east San Carlos. It used to be all orchards on the north side of Holly. On the south side, it was all seed fields. Bees have been in our neighborhood, in our community forever. And I've planted 20 fruit trees in my backyard, six different types of berries, and a number of native plants that pollinate. I actually like to attract pollinators. And I would like to be able to have a beehive, again, in my backyard. I started a project with my daughter when she was in middle school. She wanted to start a beehive. We took a beginning beekeepers class with the Bee Guild. It was kind of like a 4-H project. We actually started at former Mayor John Mueller's property out in Half Moon Bay, where he grew the giant pumpkins. And my bees got mites, and I took the empty hive back to my yard and put it behind my shed, and honeybees moved in. And I was producing 200 pounds of honey, and giving most of it away. I found out, that was, that was back in 2010, and, and then I found out that it was illegal in San Carlos to have a beehive. And I, I noticed that in 2015, the Bee Legal Program was started at the encouragement of supervisor, former supervisor Don Horsley, who encouraged a uniform beekeeping policy throughout the county. Again, not only because bees don't know jurisdictional boundaries, but also because we need bees. And with climate change, it's a very important thing for us all to have. The Bee Legal Program through the Bee Guild has been actively working with the communities. There have been very little problems. Hillsborough was another community that has worked with the Bee Legal Program. San Carlos is now the last city.
That's just the two minutes, so if you could wrap up.
Okay. I've been working with, with Niall over the, you know, last six months to a year, and it's been very constructive dialogue. I really appreciate it. Just a few, a few comments. I really do think the fee is too high, and I think that there's too much staff time that's anticipated. You're kind of assuming a problem and a liability, and not, you know, the public education is really important.
Thank you, Sam. We're going to have to get this wrapped up.
All right.
We did get your detailed letter, though, so thank you.
You could not be here, but you did send in a letter.
Thank you. We did receive that. Next up, Crystal.
Yes, Marika De Bruin, and then you'll be followed by Wolford De Bruin.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. My name's Marika. We've been living in San Carlos for 10 years. My whole family's here. I have 12-year-old twins, and our son, Ayrton, is extremely allergic to bees. He is off-the-charts allergic to bees. And he almost died. He was swimming in our swimming pool, and he got stung in his armpit, and he had, started off as a baseball-sized swelling, went to a cantaloupe-sized swelling, and we went to Sequoia Hospital. And Stanford had to send an ambulance with two critical care doctors onboard to pick him up and take him over to Stanford's PICU to be treated for two days. The EpiPen didn't work for us. He was pumped full of lots of meds, missed his first few days of school, and it was awful and traumatic. So when I think about someone putting a beehive into one of our, we have a new neighbor moving in, and, and I think, gosh, what if that person wanted to put a beehive in? We would be terrified to spend time in our backyard. We have, we're fortunate, we have a swimming pool, and we have a ton of bees as is. And I'm, we're always working with Ayrton to be strong and be back there, and if there's a lot of them, he comes inside. But I can't even imagine what it'd be like if there was a hive swarming next door. And as a matter of fact, we toured, when we were looking for a smaller school, we toured Acton Academy in Belmont. And we were touring the school, and we loved it. And then we walked into the backyard, and I looked over, and there was just bees swirling next door. And I said, oh my God, Ayrton, go back inside. And I talked to them, and I said, what's going on next door? And they said, well, we're in a residential neighborhood, and the person has, is a beekeeper. And I said, and, and they said, well, you know, when the kids play with the ball, and the ball flies over there, we just tell them all to run inside really fast. And I was thinking, right, because if a bee flies into a hive, it's going to get angry. And for Ayrton, if he were stung by one bee, it could kill him, but many bees would be, there'd be, it just breaks my heart to even think about it. And so I know the bell is going, but I just want to say, can we please put in some requirements around a notice, you know, for the neighbors knowing? And, and can we have some sort of rights to protect ourselves? Because we love San Carlos, and if our neighbor went in and we put in a hive, I don't know how we could even continue to live in our home, to be honest. So.
Thank you, Marika.
Thank you so much for your time.
Wolford, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Arianna.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for listening also on this somewhat emotional subject. I want to make a couple of comments on the information that was in the, the packet that Niall prepared. In there, it said that only if you get stung in the mouth, nose, or throat area, it could pose, pose danger. That's not true. The venom will travel, travel anywhere where blood goes. Ayrton got stung in his arm, and his neck swelled up, and they were ready to intubate him the moment his voice changed. So it doesn't matter where you get stung. Once you get stung, and you are allergic, you are at risk. That is way more important. The other thing is, what is in the city of San Carlos that is critical, that needs pollinating? Have people complained that there is not enough pollination in their gardens? Would it not make more sense to take the bees and put them in a place where it actually matters, where we actually are growing crops, where we are growing fruits, and put beehives all along those areas, and have the bees out in the, in the areas where it matters? And the other thing is, it also stated there that we could plant flowers or plants or shrub that could attract or deter bees. We did that. And we have a pool, and I'd like to see somebody with a hive put up a bigger water reservoir so that the bees are not attracted to the water that we have in our backyard. Like, allegedly, there are no beehives in San Carlos, and we already have a boatload of bees in there. We, we can't get them out. We fish them out of the water and get rid of them. But it's very hard for us to be in the backyard without bees as is. And I imagine if somebody, even three gardens over, right, and even if they posted in their backyard that they were having a beehive in there, they would still find their way into our back garden. So some form of notification, not just the adjacent properties, but the entire block, because bees don't care about property lines, they'll swarm over, that we at least be notified that there is a danger for our son to be safe in, in his own backyard.
Thank you.
That was it. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Arianna, you're up next, and then you'll be followed by Ayrton.
Welcome, Arianna.
She wanted to speak. Nice and loud. You can do it.
No, I can't.
Okay, just read what you wrote.
No, that one goes here.
Okay, just start reading.
If there were bees, we wouldn't want to go outside. We would be scared, and we would, and we like to go outside quite a bit. When Ayrton was stung, it was really, it was, it was really frightening. He nearly died, and there were these firemen, and they came in everywhere, and he missed the first day of second grade. If that happened again, I know, I wouldn't know what to do. I frankly can't imagine a world without my brother. Thank you.
Thank you, Arianna.
And Ayrton, you're, you're up next.
Okay, if I was stung by a bee, I could potentially die, and it would not exactly be fair if one of our, I guess, if one of our neighbors were to have a beehive. Because then, I, if I could have got, because every time that I would go outside, I would be, I would be fearful that I would get stung by a bee. And then, like, and then how would I go and, like, play in my backyard or front yard? Or would I just be, like, stuck in the house? And then if I wanted to do something outside, would we have to, like, go somewhere, like, go somewhere else where we can't even go in our own new backyard? I'd be, like, really scared if our neighbor, if our neighbor had, like, a beehive next door. Yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So that was our last speaker in person, and there are no hands on Zoom.
All right, last call for Zoom. We'll give it 10 seconds. And I will, do we need to close this public comment?
You can just announce that it's closed.
This public comment is closed. So we can move on to deliberation, if any of my colleagues would like to discuss anything we have considered here. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan, and thanks for all the public comment. I think, I mean, one of the items I think we'll touch on later on will be the, sort of the permitting and how we do that, in terms of the fees, excuse me, for the permit fees, but at a later, assuming it's appropriate to look at that, Greg, at a later, when we do the fee setting, that's, would be the time to look at that one?
Yeah, that'd be the time to do that.
Okay. And in terms of the, just a question, in terms of if we were to do some sort of, at that point, if we want to do some sort of educational sort of incentive, we would do that at that time, too? Or would that be, now would be a time that suggests that?
I think that would be something more likely to be in the fee schedule as maybe a footnote or something, because the, the policy here is not really addressing how you, other than that you're required to pay the fee. But that would be, that's a component of the fee, it seems to me, just whether there's some relief.
Bring it up, then. So I think, I appreciate the work that's been done by staff on this and the feedback. I think it's a good step forward. I would like to include a notice requirement for the immediate neighbors. I think a number of the folks and a number of my colleagues have raised that. I think that would be a good thing to do. In terms of the criteria, I understand from, I think it's a, while we couldn't require certain medical sort of information, I think that's still something that could be provided if that individual wanted to do that, to make their case. And I think that would be probably the better way to do that, given sort of the limitations around, you know, sort of privacy around that. But that would be sort of my, my thoughts around it.
Yeah, thank you. Adam, I just have a follow-up question, I guess, to the notice, noticing. Kind of ironic, we wound down our RDRC of late and awarded those city coins today. I remember sitting on the RDRC, which was always a bit of a frustrating experience, because these new projects, we would notify, you know, 350 feet, and a lot of people would be upset, and we really actually didn't have that much discretion involved in influencing the design. And so it was kind of like, you know, we got a bunch of concerned people in the room, and then we really couldn't do very much to address their concerns. So I'm just curious, if we notify, I guess, adjacent properties, seems like a good idea, but now they, they know about it, and, and we feel like we can't ask specifics of their health situation. So what is our standard? What is our policy at that point? Are we saying if any neighbor objects, we won't issue the permit? Is that, you know, is that where we're at, Niall? Have you thought through that? I know that's different than even your staff recommendation, so completely fair if you haven't thought through that. But we will need to think through that, then.
Well, the city attorney is pointing out that the policy says that the community development director or his designee can make the determination.
And that would be appealing.
And that's appealable. I guess, I don't know the range that you would like the notice to go out to of homes, and whether it should come from the city or the resident, and how we verify when it went out, and.
I think we can address those details, but I guess I just want to, so let's assume a neighbor objects, you know, is, so the community, you know, Al would then just, you know, if he thought the neighbor was serious in their objection, he would approve it? I mean, you know, I'm just trying to, what is our standard? Any objection, and we don't approve a permit? You know, I just want to make sure we know what we're doing here.
That's not the standard, is just getting an objection. But, but it's going to be based upon the, the evidence and information that the community development director or designee will receive. And there will be unique circumstances to each parcel, you know, house, property, the, where they're proposing to, I mean, all those things will still be relevant, where they're going to put the hive and stuff. We're not really requiring it, but that, that'll all be relevant to the circumstances and the health and safety aspects that, that Niall pointed to, that are kind of underlying the, the animal control code.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. You answered my question.
Very good. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's funny, I know all the speakers, and I've dealt, you know, kind of struggled with this for the last couple of years. If we're going to do this, I am not in favor of lowering the fee. I think $550 is not too much to ask somebody to pay. Maybe if they take a course and we modify it, I wouldn't want to see it go away, but I think the fee ought to stay. I think 150 is, is appropriate. Regarding the notice, I, what I like about that is that it creates a dialogue. If somebody has to notify their neighbor, now they have to have a conversation with them. And if someone is really serious And if someone is really serious about it, then that conversation may produce some more comfort in the neighbors who are concerned about it. But maybe the discomfort might change their mind. And it would be something that, I just think it's really common courtesy, it's being a good neighbor. I know that the statistics show that we, you know, there haven't been a lot of complaints in the other cities. I get that. But, you know, when you know people that have personally experienced near-death experiences, it does change your perspective. So, and the other thing I wonder about, and this didn't come up, but I just thought about it, is whether or not we could create a registry in this town of who owns beehives. In other words, if we're going to have a system where you have to, you know, get a permit, then there ought to be a registry that we can publish that says, you know, there are permits. I don't know, Greg, what you think about that, but it's something that I'm wondering about.
I mean, the location of the hives, because it's a permit system, will be, will be public, I mean, there'll be a public record, the application, you know, with the personal information redacted, but the...
Address would be...
The assistance of the hives and the, you know, I have to think about it and thought about where the address would, if the address would be part of the, would be part of the public record. But I think we could, you know, create a map that had general locations of where the hives were without disclosing that, it seems to me, if that's the direction of the council.
If I may add, one of the letters we received today referenced the Beware Program and mentioned that it's California law that beekeepers are required to register their hives under California law and provide notice when they move. The law was created more with the intent to protect, I think, large-scale beehive operations, because part of, one of the benefits or the intents of the program is to let beekeepers know when there is an intent for some sort of an organization to do, use pesticide. So it connects beekeepers with pesticide applicators and county agricultural commissioners. So the intent is different, but for $10, you're supposed to register anyway under California law. And they use a GIS, which we now know what that stands for, mapping system. And the way that the mapping is done is it kind of protects individual identities. It doesn't give you specific addresses.
Right.
Just something to keep in mind, that there is a tool that currently exists, I guess, is my point.
And we could make that available on the city website?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron.
Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for their public comment tonight, especially our younger residents here, who are probably up past bedtime. I thought you guys did a really good job speaking. I know that can be, make you feel nervous, and you did a really good job. I see both sides of this issue. I'm a gardener myself. I was just in my backyard admiring the bees on my plum tree blossoms and feeling thankful for them and hoping I get a good crop this year. But I also carry an EpiPen for a member of my family, and I know how very serious those concerns are, especially with young ones. So overall, I do like this code. I like the permit process. I think that it helps us regulate the hives overall. And as was mentioned earlier, you know, we can review it again in a year, and if things aren't working, or if we want to loosen up the process, we could always revisit it. I do agree with Councilmember Rack and my colleagues about the noticing. It's why I was kind of probing earlier on how that would work. I do think that, you know, especially neighbors have a right to know and to object. And I think that we should be pretty clear about that process. So I don't know, you know, I think definitely the adjacent neighbors, I don't, I wanted to take the temperature of the council of, you know, if we should expand that a little bit further, knowing that, you know, the flyway could go one direction or another. So that's kind of what I'm struggling with, is like what the mayor was saying, just kind of how we build out this process and give people a little certainty as they try to figure out how to object. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I'll just say, first, I'm glad we're relaxing the policy. We clearly do have beekeepers in town, and no one has taken us up on our prior permitting process, so change is needed. You know, and I, it is hard to look at this map of San Mateo County and realize the vast majority of the county does not require permits and just rely on nuisance. But then you do, you know, I understand your story, and I appreciate Ariana and Eric speaking very much. And so I do think a relaxation is in order, but I think keeping the city involved does make sense, and we can keep adjusting over time as needed. I do support a notice provision. I think, you know, that's something else we could adjust over time. I think I would support adjacent neighbors at this time. I think that, you know, at least diffuses the bees. They're not going to be concentrated probably two, you know, two properties over, I wouldn't think. And, you know, I think we should send the notice, just, you know, it's pretty easy. These are the addresses, let's just get it out. We'll have a standard notice, then it'll be very clear, and we'll know it got done right. And, you know, there's some expense to that. And, you know, if someone does come in and want to talk to the community development director and state their case, you know, that's real staff time at a high level. So, you know, I think I agree with Ron about the $150 fee, but I liked Adam's idea. So maybe it's $100 off if they do take one of these beekeeping gold classes. And that'll still be 50 bucks anyways, and we can revisit that over time as well as we continue to do fee studies. So that's where I think I'm at on this one. Yeah, Adam?
I would just, I would just want to follow up, just so we sort of hear from all of us on this. I agree that we should send the notice. I think that's, you know, it's not a lot. And I agree, we start with the adjacent properties. I think that makes sense. And then, you know, I think we can do some more research and see over time how that, how that works, but at least that's a good start, I think, from that end. And it sounds like the fees, we're going to have another discussion in a few weeks when it comes up, so be good.
And is that right? We shouldn't decide about the discount for taking the class? We can decide that later in the fee study as well?
Yeah, that's my recommendation, that we handle that as a good component of the fee, a discount, a contingent discount, if you will.
Got it. Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm uncomfortable overall with this, but I realize that without it, we have a worse situation. So I think this is a situation where we are, we're trying to improve on what we have rather than not doing anything at all. Sometimes I think not doing anything at all is worse than doing something. We're going to find out, if this passes, how effective it is and if we need to modify it. So I do support the idea of coming back. So despite my discomfort, I realize that it's a question of what we have and what we're going to get. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I empathize with your family, but I also understand what has, what a lot of our residents are asking us for. I do like the idea of classes and some kind of fee waiver, and I also think adjacent would be my recommendation. I think if you open up two more, there'll be lots of feedback and opposition. And I know just personally, I had to notify my neighbors of 300 feet, and I had 30 people at my door at one night. So I do know how that process also works. So I think adjacent for now, and I think we had, we're making progress.
Terrific. Thank you. Pranita, so I hear a consensus on adopting this policy as a significant relaxation. We'll discuss fees in the fee study, and we will notify adjacent neighbors and leave it to an appeal process to the community development director. Did I get that right? Very good. With that amendment, I would entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, I just would like to, I think we have what your, the concept is. What I'm, I'll work with staff to come up with the reasonable notice period. I'm thinking like a 10-day notice before the permit's issued, so that someone could raise an objection, they have time. It'll be a city notice, and we'll put that in the policy. And then we'll develop the final language, if you're comfortable with letting us develop that language with your, with your direction.
I would just like to add, I don't see why we couldn't make it two weeks. It's not like there's a giant rush all of a sudden to do it. If we give people enough time, so if we do, I get putting some parameters on it, but I think two weeks is fine.
I agree, because people go on vacation, they could be gone for 10, 12 days and never, and they get the notice and their...
Good direction.
Time has passed, yeah.
Okay. So a notice with 14 days, and otherwise, we will leave it to our city attorney to develop the more specifics around that. And it will be a city-issued notice.
To the adjacent?
To adjacent properties, yes. So with that amendment, I would entertain a motion.
I can do it. I move to adopt Resolution 2024-...
35.
85?
35.
Oh, 35. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the 2024 Beekeeping Practices Administration Policy in accordance with Section 6.04-430 of the Animal Control Chapter of the San Carlos Municipal Code. With the amendments...
As I summarize.
As Mayor Dugan summarized.
I'll second.
Terrific. We have a motion and a second. We'll do roll call.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes. Terrific. That is passed. We appreciate everyone's participation in this process, and we have relaxed our beekeeping policy, but are working to protect the neighbors as well. So, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I move to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Thank you. Adam, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Great. Let's take roll on extending the meeting till 11 o'clock.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes, we are extended. Moving on to Item 10B, considering a resolution appropriating $100,000 for automated external defibrillators in our parks and Wheeler Plaza parking garage. Amy?
Good evening, Mayor Dugan, council members and community. My name is Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. And as Mayor Dugan just mentioned, tonight, the action for council is to consider appropriating $100,000 from Fund 25 to, for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of eight AEDs in parks, as well as in the Wheeler Plaza parking garage. I'll provide some background on AEDs, though most of you may already be aware. An AED is an automated external defibrillator, a medical device designed to analyze the heart rhythm and deliver an electric shock to victims of ventricular fibrillation, which is an irregular heart rhythm, to restore the heart rhythm back to normal. AEDs are proven to increase the chance of survival of patients experiencing an emergency. And although trainings are offered, specific AED trainings are not required to use one of these devices in an emergency. The city currently maintains AEDs in public facilities, including the ACC, the youth center, City Hall, Corp Yard, Kiwanis Building, L'Oriola Building, and the library. Our maintenance, our public works maintenance staff inspects the AEDs in all of our facilities, replacing the AED batteries every four years and the pads every other year, to ensure that the devices are working properly if they are ever to be used. This past September, council heard from folks in the community, a few are joining us this evening, about the desire to make AEDs accessible in our public parks. It was at that meeting that council directed staff to research the feasibility and options to install AEDs in our parks. Following that meeting, I reached out to other Parks and Recreation Directors in the county to poll what cities or communities have AEDs accessible to the public in parks. Of those that responded, Foster City was the only city to report back that they have AEDs in parks with athletic fields. Belmont was another city that responded that AEDs were available in parks, but did require key access, which sports organizations had access to. San Mateo reported that AEDs are kept in their ranger vehicles. Nine other cities in the county reported that they do not have AEDs in parks that are accessible to the general public. Something to note is that additional comments through this communication included concerns and experience with vandalism and theft, and that it became a burden on staff to maintain these AEDs in public parks. In some cases, became a cost burden, and they removed them. So taking into consideration the feedback from other agencies, staff looked at the best option that could mitigate the concerns of vandalism and theft. Should council approve these in public parks, staff recommends the SAVE Station Tower. This system includes safety and security options, including a visual and audible alarm. The design is, it's designed for maximum visibility, as you can see in that photo. It has a customizable 911 location decal, so that anyone that were to use it would know where their location is. An internal ventilation and heating system, remote monitoring, text and email notifications if activated, and the tower is waterproof to sustain the outdoor elements. These towers do require to be hardwired, which is part of the cost you see tonight. Additionally, the purchase of the towers includes a four-year cellular plan for the alert system. Following the first four years, the city would need to add a cellular service to these tower locations. To use the system in an emergency, a citizen would have to open the tower and cabinet door. You can kind of see the clear plastic case there. Immediately, that activates a call to our local 911 dispatch and snaps a photo of the person who's opening the cabinet and activating it. The citizen would then pull the AED device out of the unit, take it to the emergency, and administer and begin the steps to using the AED on the person experiencing the emergency. Should council approve this project, staff's recommending the following locations: one device at Arguello Park, one at Burton Park, one at Crestview, one at L'Oriola, and two between the Highlands and Stadium Park Field, and then two at the Wheeler Plaza parking garage, for a total of AEDs in the community and public places. The budget breakdown is to the right. The cost of the SAVE Station Towers is roughly $45,000. The AED devices are $28,000. Electrical work is $17,000, and then including a $10,000 line item for contingency. That's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Amy. Really appreciate that. And I just had a quick, is that, the photo you showed, that's what these will look like?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Great. Vice Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Amy, for your and your staff's work. I think you collaborated with the fire department. I know it was a lot of work, so I'm going to start by thanking you. I have three questions. The first one, the current AEDs that are in city facilities, are those only key accessible? Or can anyone, they're not like the new ones that we're going to put in, right?
Correct. So those are just the AED devices mounted on our facility walls? So there is not a security device that's, that it encloses? You can open that cabinet and grab the device.
Okay, so it's not locked up?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then, are there signs outside of our facilities that say, "AED found here," kind of like how we have diaper-changing station signs outside of our public park bathrooms? How do people know?
I don't, my gut is telling me we do not, because I can't visually locate that on the exterior of our buildings, as I'm thinking about looking at the youth center or ACC. But that's something we can look into installing.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I appreciated the list of where they are, because I didn't know they were in there either. And I think, you know, I don't know, it just might be something that people walking by would be like, oh, that's good to know, right? It's in the ACC, or it's in City Hall, and if I know someone... It's in the ACC, or it's in City Hall, and if I know someone having a heart attack at the dog park, I can run into City Hall. Okay, thanks. And then my final question, could you just walk us through why there's a suggestion to put two in the parking garage? I'm, I'm just unclear why, that's kind of a focal, I understand the athletic fields, but what's the thinking behind putting them in the parking garage?
I can take it, do you have any, that, that suggestion came from Public Works, from Lou Durand, that had been, had it been discussed prior?
Stephen?
So the thought there was actually to provide, you know, not only for the parking garage, but also kind of having something close in the downtown?
Okay, that's interesting. I, I don't know, I'll be interested in what my colleagues think about that. I know the second story of the parking garage, that's probably where I would most be concerned about vandalism, but I don't know, I'll throw it open to my colleagues, that, you know, that's an open question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Amy, for your help. Late. Thank you, Amy, it's past my bedtime. Thank you for your work and staff. My question is, my same similar question was, there's two on Wheeler Plaza, and as I've been on council, I have heard that the second floor is usually empty. So is there a park that's missing out of the AEDs?
Is there a park?
Is there a park that's missing?
Oh, park? We identified the parks that have our athletic fields, that are our bigger parks, then we get into the next tier layer of parks, and, which would be our smaller neighborhood parks, such as like Hillcrest, Cedar Park, Neighborhood Park on San Carlos Avenue, Chilton, so I think that gets into the next layer of parks.
I mean, like, you know, Harrington Park could be a good idea, except we're redesigning it, and, you know, the redesign will probably put one of these somewhere, I'd imagine, but, you know.
Yeah, I did just want to note, something that I didn't mention in the presentation is, we have installed security cameras at some of our park sites, and we also just installed them at Wheeler Plaza, and so the parking garage, of course, just working with the electrician, we're looking at what's most visible to the public, we're looking at where it possibly is in eyesight of the security cameras in our parks, and then looking at, just lost my train of thought. Visible to the public in the security camera view would be where we recommend, oh, and then where the best installation point from the electrician would be, to have the most minimal work done to connect those. So those are the three factors we'll look at in the placement of each, of each tower.
And then my second question was, when we rent, there's safety, there's CPR training involved, correct?
Yes. So. Sorry, go ahead.
So the organizations that rent these parks, there's CPR training involved, correct?
So it's not required for those trainings. As mentioned, as part of kind of CPR and the AED trainings, there are trainings available. Our staff do take those trainings, just because we work with the public and we work with, in all of our camps and our programs, but it's not required to use these devices. When you use an AED, if you've ever been through a training, the minute you turn it on, it talks you through each step, and is not going to administer shock on someone if their heart rhythm is not, is not out of rhythm.
And then same thing with signage, I've seen signs where "AED here," or a red light or something like that, so just so people know where their location is.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pranita. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amy, good report. I think my questions have been answered. One was the relative safety of these devices from vandalism, maybe not so much in Wheeler Plaza because of a lot of in-and-out traffic, but the parks in general. You have security cameras around there as well.
Yes, so the only parks that we would be installing that do not have security cameras, Crestview and L'Oriola. Arguello has cameras, Burton has cameras, and Highlands Stadium have cameras.
Do you have any, you know, in your research, did you have any stories or evidence of these things being damaged?
Yes.
Intentionally?
Yeah.
So that's a big, is that something we should be pretty concerned about?
Yes, and the cities that we spoke with, they did not use this specific tower. The company that sells these towers really looks at it as one of the ways to mitigate those vandalism and theft issues, just because it does take a picture of the person that's opening the cabinet door in an emergency. If you're using it for its actual cause, then take the picture and you kind of, you know. And, but I know that Redwood City had them in parks at some point, and then they ended up removing them from their parks, just because it came, became that burden of replacing the AEDs when they were damaged or stolen.
Okay. And then my other question, I think Sarah brought this up about, you know, the issue of Wheeler Plaza. I don't know if it's necessarily a bad idea to have them, but I think there ought to be appropriate signage inside and outside, so that maybe there's signage in, you know, out by the, between, what, the two banks there on Laurel that says "AED" inside Wheeler Garage. I mean, we ought to notify people that in case there's a, you know, an event on Laurel Street, somebody knows where to go to find one. And I, do you have to be right next to the thing, or can you take the paddles and go to the person that needs it?
Yeah, you would take that device.
Take it out and you move with it, all right. It's shameful that I don't know how they work, and I hope I never have to have one used on me, or use one. Okay, so those are my, my two main questions, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ron. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. Thank you, Amy. I'm glad that we have this before us today. I had two questions. One, Greg, how does in, sort of any sort of enforcement or penalties work if someone does sort of damage this device, or, you know, we've got the photo, what's, what are the, our enforcement options?
Well, that would be a state law violation, I think vandalism or theft, and that would be enforced by the, our Sheriff's Department and the District Attorney's Office. The camp, the photo, I think, would help, be a help, helping in capturing someone who accessed one of these devices, but, yeah, that's where it would go.
Okay. And then my second question was, can you talk a little bit, Amy, about where the device, where you're considering for Burton Park for this?
Specific locations have not been identified.
Okay. And I guess sort of, I'm just thinking, like, I get what Highlands has too, I feel like Burton has two sort of separate areas, where you've got people in the playgrounds, you've got the concert in the park, you have lots of things there, and then you have the fields. And I know you have at the Kiwanis Building and the youth center, but they're not open all the time, right? So someone may not be able to get access into them. So is there a consideration to try to put, you know, I don't, you know, is there a central location that meets both? Is it better to have two there? That's, so I'm just kind of, you know, I know we're going to end up with three, but, you know, someone at seven o'clock at night is not going to be out in the youth center, potentially, or into the Kiwanis Building.
My one thought of Burton Park, as I was going through this, was looking at the tennis and basketball courts, and somewhere kind of right there seems to be that central spot at Burton. It's also right, the education and awareness to the community that the AED devices are available in our parks, and where they are, just through communication and signage, that if something did happen on the field, someone would have to run to the basketball court and back, but that would still, would be there available at that park site.
Yeah, I just, I think something, as we think about it, might be interesting to consider, just because I feel like we do have two separate zones for Burton Park of activities to think about in the future, if we can add another one, that might be something to think about. But obviously, it's a great step forward, and I'm really happy to be supporting this.
Great, thank you, Adam. Yeah, no, I'm really excited about this, I think it's a great add to our parks, and it's, you know, if even, I'm not overly concerned about the vandalism, I think this is the latest and greatest model, taking the photos, and when you open up the door, it's calling 911, right? So, I mean, someone's going to be there pretty soon, so, I, and, you know, if we save one life, you know, if we lose eight of these in the next five years, but save a life, well worth it, so, I think that's great. I did have a question, you know, what these things remind me of are those safety towers you see on college campuses, you know? And I was just curious, you know, it does call 911 when you open up the door, but the fire department's going to show up. Do they make an upgraded model that also has just a panic button on it? Because, you know, this has all the components of those panic tower things, but also has an AED. You would like to kind of see the other side be a panic button or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I do not, I don't know if it has that option. The way you just described it, I don't know if they have a different option. This option doesn't, but is it a different model, is it something similar? And I would just suggest, my comment would be, if we go that route, is to engage more with the Sheriff's Office, because then that would be an increase in calls for service from them, to see if that's, if they see that as a need, and, and are ready to respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if my colleagues would want to look into that or not, I'm not trying to slow this down, that's for sure, but, you know, this has all the infrastructure of one of those, it just doesn't have the button, just observing that. The, I definitely agree with my colleagues on signs, just, you know, the location and the signage just need to be really good, like, you know, because this could save a life. And I think it is worthwhile putting something outside of the buildings, even if they're not open all the time, just to have something there. And I do think the location's really important, I mean, we can talk about this when we get to comment, but I'm comfortable delegating, but maybe you guys should run your thinking past the Park and Rec and Culture Commission on locations, just to make sure you kind of get a lot of good ideas in the room as we pick the location on these, that seems kind of important. And, yeah, I think those are all my questions. If there are no others, we'll move on to public comment. Now would be the time to raise your hand if you're going to have public comment remotely, and I believe we might have some public comment in the room this evening.
Yes, I do have two, for in-person. First up is Dion.
And thank you for hanging out with us this evening, I appreciate that.
I think everything you guys are doing for the city, so thank you. You do a lot, and you've addressed all my concerns on the AEDs. I think to add to it, I think when kids see it, they may want to do something to the box or something. I think it would be great for the schools to say, hey, these are out there for you guys, you know? If, you know, it's important, it could save your buddy's life, and then maybe they won't touch it. So I think it's just public awareness. The other would be in the newsletter that goes out monthly, and, you know, to let people know, not only is there an app for AEDs that will tell you where the AEDs are located, but a lot of people don't know. I didn't know until I went to the first meeting, you know, the council meeting that you had. So now I have it on my phone, and I go to the sports games and Burlingame, and I go, they don't have any out here. So I'm really looking forward to thanking all of you for making this a step, for our other cities to have them in place, you know, and thank you, hopefully, for investing the money and making this a go. I think it's so important for all of our kids. So I just appreciate it, and you've addressed everything. I do think Burton should have two, two of them. Wheeler Plaza could have one, sorry. But I do, there's so many thousands of people out there on weekends, and concerts, and the games. So I think that's all I had, and the main thing was letting the schools know, and the apps, and thank you very much. You know, this is a passion for me, so, thank you.
Thank you for that, and I like that idea about partnering with the schools, and maybe it could be part of health class or something, yeah.
Okay, and next, we have Jim Reggie Regina.
I work for the city. I'm a tennis instructor and pickleball instructor, and something happened one, one day, and thank goodness, we were there to take care of it. But when we were administering CPR, the 911 operator didn't, she asked me if we had a defibrillator, and I said, no, I work here, I'm ready to do this, and had, I already, I know how to use a defibrillator. Knowing that if the defibrillator was there, it would keep me wide-eyed, as you can see, I'm still pretty emotional from this, but I think it's a good step, and, and I am out there by myself most of the time, with a lot of the students that are getting older, and they have health issues, and I have to make sure that I know where the AEDs are. And, you know, I work at the youth center, I know exactly where it is. I know, I work outside at Burton Park, but I know where it is at the Kiwanis Building. I work right next to it, but when it's closed, I can't access it. So if I'm there, it's great, and if the AEDs there, that'll help us, it'll help me, and I can sleep better, so, thanks.
Thank you, Reggie, I appreciate that, and thank you for all you do and what you did that day, and you probably don't remember, but I think about seven or eight years ago, I was one of your aging students for one of your group classes, so, thank you. Very good. This would be last call for any online public comment.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, terrific, we will close public comment on this, and move on to discussion. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We make a lot of tough decisions here, but this one for me is easy, because it could save a life, and you can't put a price on life, so I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Pranita.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just kind of build on a few of the other comments. I don't, I don't know if we were deciding tonight on locations, but I did want to kind of build on a couple things that were said. I, too, would support two AEDs at Burton, and maybe removing the one on the second story of Wheeler, because that is very underparked, and just kind of remote, it feels to me. And I would actually support, if you have another creative idea for a downtown placement, you know, when Harrington Park is finished, whatever that is, I think that's a more central, more visible location. But if there's no other place downtown, I think putting one downtown in the garage with signage is, I forget who mentioned it, but I would support that. I liked the idea of running locations by the Park and Rec Commission, as you decided in the parks. I think it would be interesting to put a sticker on the outside that says, you are on camera, and this, once opened, this station will immediately call 911. I think that might deter curious, you know, youngsters from opening it up, you know? You can deter with a sticker, a little education before, you know, someone gets curious with those. And then I just, I wanted to build on what Pranita said, you know, I was, I'm very much in favor of doing this. I was deeply moved by the members of the public who came and spoke in September, including the son and the daughter of the, of the woman who had the heart attack at Highlands Park. And I think that this system makes a lot of sense. I love that we're putting it out in our parks. We know that both our youth and our older adults can experience cardiac arrest at any time, so I think this makes a lot of sense. And I'm just very, very proud of our city for doing this. And I, it sounds like Foster City has put this in their parks already, but I really do hope that other cities follow our lead, and we're going to be, you know, one of those shining examples out there with this new system, and hopefully that deters theft and vandalism, so I'm very, very proud of this. I also just wanted to make one brief comment, that this is an awesome project. I think this is a project that any number of our state legislators, or our federal legislator, or even our county supervisor with Measure K funds would have totally funded in a heartbeat. And I know that, you know, we were kind of maybe moving fast, and we don't have a system dialed in to like, go out looking for support from outside sources for projects like this, but I know you're working on the North Crestview Plan, we have the downtown coming, I would just like us to really think about outside funding for these really cool projects, too. too. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Terrific. Thank you, Sarah. And yeah, I would echo that, this, not sure if the pun was intended, but I think they would have supported us in a heartbeat. I'm too proud of St. Carlos, this is great, can't wait to approve this. I agree with doing two in Burton and pulling the one from Wheeler, and I would, you know, in another cycle, pay for another one downtown if, if we find a good place for it. And yeah, I think just bouncing the locations off the Park and Rec Commission, there's just so much to think about. I'm sure, you know, just going through that process, you'd think of something. Very good. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, up, Resolution 2024 dash?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Carlos appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Fund 25 unassigned fund balance in fiscal year 2023-24 to create a new capital improvement project for the purchase and installation of eight automated external defibrillators, AEDs, in parks and the Wheeler Plaza parking garage.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Crystal, please call roll.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. Terrific. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Amy. Great. Moving on to agendas. Thank you.
John, I do remember you.
Okay.
I want stories later.
Yeah.
They might pay for those.
Yeah. The extent to which I'm a memorable tennis player is not for a good reason. Moving on to agenda setting, do any of my colleagues have anything they wanted us to consider for a future agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to adjournment, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.